I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of October 22, 2015, to order. Let the record show that all of the commissioners are here, as well as staff. And at this point, would you join with me for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there any agenda changes?
No.
Okay, no agenda changes. Next is our public comment period. If there's someone in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission on an land use item that's not on the agenda, now would be your chance.
Joe Kelly, from the N Representative of District One. Chair McLaughlin and Commissioner Wooster, I thank you for your no vote on the Olive Orchard Estate process. This is what's come about from Olive Orchard Estates, from just my research on it. It seems we have a big problem there. It seems that there was a December 20, 2004 resolution, a resolution approving a tentative subdivision tract map. The Board of Supervisors entered into a legal, they thought was what was a legal binding contract with CRV Enterprises, Inc., based on findings and conditions. There is a 2003-157 zoning amendment, tentative subdivision tract map for CRV Enterprises, an LLC mitigation measures monitoring program. It was passed. There's still doubt now if there was a contract with whom, CRV Enterprises? A subsequent resolution, 07125, June 6, 2007, authorizing execution of subdivision agreement and approving final map for Olive Orchard Estates, tract 2003-157. Now stepping down to the preliminary public report standard subdivision states, name of applicant, Valley Springs Gold Creek, Inc., a California corporation. Tract map and number, Olive Orchard Estates, Unit 1 and 2. Advertised name, Olive Orchard. Department of Real Estate file, 119295SAS00. Issue date, September 8, 2006. There's also a final subdivision public report on Old Golden Oaks LLC. A California limited liability company in Valley Springs Gold Creek, Inc., a California corporation. And a final public report standard in the matter of Old Golden Oaks LLC. I guess what I'm getting at is somewhere something got changed. If there was a contract, the contracts that are in place after, at this time of December 20, 2004, would have been legal had the property not been transferred already to another corporation that was not included. Now, it's been brought to my attention that the people of, the owners of property now in Olive Orchard Estates were sent information to be at that meeting, or the Planning Commission meeting, or send in a statement. They never received any such notice because my understanding is the developer was responsible to give to the planning department a copy of the names and addresses of those folks. So nothing ever got done. And if they, even if they did, why would they do it? They're looking at a different name, not Olive Orchard Estates, but the other name. Why would anybody respond to it when they're thinking, "I'm in something else"? So we have a big problem here, and it needs to be cured. Now, the county, I understand, is in a little sweat about it because as we've been called, and I'm going to use the term, we weren't called this, but we've kind of taken it on, the bounty hunters are going to go out and do something. Yes, we are going to do something. We're going to contact, and as I've been instructed or informed that there's been a change, the Bureau of Real Estate Commissioner and the FBI and any other agencies we need to contact on this thing to cure the problem. So, just letting you know what's going on, we're going to follow through. We have our drafts done, and I don't know that we'll go to an attorney to turn this over to them, but that was where the bounty hunter came from. And if you paid any attention to the, what was it? The Board of Supervisors meeting, the one before this last one, I believe it was, when Mr. Tanner was here and I was speaking about the subdivision public reports, and he says, "It's not in the reports. It's not in the reports." Well, he was right. And the reason it wasn't is because the owners had changed, and they weren't subject to any conditions. And it was changed before the documents were approved, too, December 20, 2004. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
I'm Peter Race.
We'll get to you, Joyce.
Pardon me?
No, it was, there was a race for the podium. You didn't see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Go ahead, go ahead.
Duty before you.
Uh-huh, that's true. I just have a quickie question for clarification. That redefinition of a family, did ever come to the, from the planning department? Is that something that you folks get involved in or not? Redefinition of a family by, for the general plans? Thank you.
Can we respond?
Sure, I think that-
Are there questions you need to clarify? So, a year or so ago, we adopted an ordinance that included some new definitions, one of which was family as it applies to the zoning code. And Mr. Race has had some concern over that definition. That ordinance was adopted. You guys recommended approval. It was adopted by the board and has been in effect for, I think, about a year now.
Wasn't it also in the housing, the housing element?
It was the housing element that-
Yeah, that also had that new definition of family.
Right, right.
It's where it passed through this commission.
Yes. So the answer's yes.
Earlier this year.
Was there required for a general plan?
I don't know if it was required or not. I think you're required to have a definition of family, which we adopted in the-
In the general plan?
In the housing element, which is part of the general plan.
Have the case, I example, in New York, that passed, or did not set the precedent? I'm sorry, did it not set the precedent?
And I guess, what's your question?
Did that go from you folks?
Did that, yes, we adopted a-
And you were-
Part of the housing element, had a definition of family, and evidently there was another ordinance which had a definition of family. So yes, it was, whatever that definition was, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you all were, that's fine, that's how I wanted to know.
I don't understand what the point is that you're getting at. Could you give us a little more detail, please?
Well, the general plan that not required for the county redefine what is a family. It's not enough basic requirements. So if it wasn't in the requirements-
Well, and I don't-
-that you have to do it.
I think we, but before, you know, again, this item wasn't agendized. I don't know that we should go into a lot of discussion about this. We had, you know, a question, it's been kind of asked and answered, and without going much further, I don't know, Peter, if we should continue.
I think I can kind of wrap this. There were a number of issues in the housing element that some commissioners found objectionable. And so did board members, as I recall. However, because of the instructions that we were given as to the implications of changing the housing element in any substantive way, it being the only element that is passed, that has to pass muster with the state, that our hands were tied, for lack of a better expression, to a point where we want, we needed to get past the housing element without any major substantive changes with the promise that we would revisit it after the general plan was done because we didn't want to jeopardize the passage of the general plan. That was my understanding of that discussion. But we, again, I say, the promise was that we were going to get to revisit the housing element at a future date, not, you know, when we're still alive, in the near future. So that subject will be revisited fairly certain.
Oh, this revisited, fine, because as far as the basic, I think, seven or eight required to address, this was not one of them.
You may be looking at general plan regulations versus housing element regulations, and that's a different animal, as Peter would explain, if he had, if this was an agenda item, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly Mines, I just want to weigh in on this particular topic because I think there's another issue that has not been brought up related to the definition of family. My understanding is that among those implementation measures which were outlined, which needed to be completed for the approval of the new housing element, there were a number of state code definitions or state code items for which Calaveras was not in conformity. And it's required that we, we identify, we have the same code, our code match the state code in certain instances. And my recollection, because I looked at it quite a bit, and I even worked a little bit with Deborah in the, in the planning department, the way we, we were required to redefine family to be in conformity with the state code. Now, Peter, maybe you can prove me wrong on that, but that was something. It has nothing to do with the general plan guidelines, say, you have to define family in a certain way. That's not true. But there, as I say, there were maybe 10 or 14 items which you went through, and some of them had already been done before you arrived, to bring our code in conformity with state code, and that was one of them. So I don't think you're going to be able to change the definition of family, that's all I'm saying.
I didn't say we could.
No, I know you didn't. But you said you were going to revisit, I inferred from what you said, that part of revisiting the housing element would be to change that definition of family.
But you didn't hear that from me.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Joyce Tekel, Calaveras Planning Coalition. I'm going to read a brief section of the government code relating to state planning priorities. It's a broader general topic, it's not the land use element, which is on the agenda today. The government code section is 65041.1. The state planning priorities, which are intended to promote equity, strengthen the economy, protect the environment, and promote public health and safety in the state, including in urban, suburban, and rural communities, shall be as follows. A, to promote infill development and equity by rehabilitating, maintaining, and improving existing infrastructure that supports infill development and appropriate reuse and redevelopment of previously developed underutilized land that is presently served by transit, streets, water, sewer, and other essential services, particularly in underserved areas, and to preserving cultural and historic resources. B, to protect environmental and agricultural resources by protecting, preserving, and enhancing the state's most valuable natural resources, including working landscapes such as farm, range, and forest lands, natural lands such as wetlands, watersheds, wildlife habitats, and other wildlands, recreation lands such as parks, trails, green belts, and other open space, and landscapes with locally unique features and areas identified by the state as deserving special protection. C, to encourage efficient development patterns by ensuring that any infrastructure associated with development, other than infill development, supports new development that does all of the following. One, uses land efficiently. Two, is built adjacent to existing developed areas to the extent consistent with the priorities specified pursuant to subdivision. B, three, is located in an area appropriately planned for growth. Four, is served by adequate transportation and other essential utilities and services. Five, and from my point of view, the most important, minimize its ongoing cost to taxpayers. That's the general plan I signed up for. I wish we were still working on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Good morning. Muriel Zeller, Valley Springs. I'm here to address what Director Maurer called a fundamental issue regarding the draft general plan and the commission's rewriting of it. Oh, excuse me, I have a coffee. At the October 8 Planning Commission meeting, Planning Director Maurer identified a fundamental issue facing the commission, namely whether growth will be constrained outside of existing communities. As the director noted, there are costs associated with widespread dispersed low-density development. He also noted that much of what the commission is doing in rewriting the draft general plan is a matter of philosophy and policy. The majority of commissioners seem to oppose development constraints and agree that low-density dispersed ranch development should occur wherever a developer deems it profitable. As Commissioner Mutertis asked, if you have somebody who is willing to pay for the extension of infrastructure to their project, which is outside of a community area, why not let them build it? The reasons you might not want such development include: conversion pressure on adjacent resource production lands and growth-inducing impacts; the creation of an incompatible use with adjacent resource production lands, which represent a thriving industry in Calaveras County; an adverse impact on natural systems such as air and water filtration, carbon sequestration, and plant and wildlife habitat; an adverse impact on the local tourism and recreation industry, which is supported by the open space values of resource production lands; an adverse impact on groundwater levels if the development is beyond surface water delivery; adverse impacts on existing infrastructure, community services, and county revenue; rural residential development does not pay for itself; increased costs to existing residents; increased danger from wildfires; and inconsistency with the state's codified planning priorities, which include infill development, protection of environmental and agricultural resources, and efficient development patterns, which Joyce just read for you. The majority of commissioners also seem to be unaware of the value of services provided by natural systems found on resource production lands, such as air and water filtration, carbon sequestration, and wildlife habitat, and the obligation to utilize that valuation in decision-making processes. Every local open space element is required to contain a specific action program to preserve open space, and open space zoning is a state requirement for counties and general law cities because the state legislature has determined that the preservation of open space land is necessary not only for the maintenance of the economy of the state, but also for the assurance of the continued availability of land for the production of food and fiber, for the enjoyment of scenic beauty, for recreation, and for the use of natural resources.
Muriel, you've got about a minute left.
In addition, the land use element must be consistent with the conservation and open space element. The open space and conservation element says, "Other general plan elements addressing conservation and open space issues include the land use element." Which should have goals, policies, and implementation programs intending to maintain open space and preserving the rural character of the county through clustering, infill, and designing new development to conserve natural scenic and cultural resources. The commission cannot rewrite the draft plan in a vacuum. There must be consistency among the elements. I would add that a laissez-faire approach to development will also create problems of internal consistency with the resource production element, circulation element, and public safety.
Good morning. Vicki Ranky, Calaveras County Republicans. I have a question on the current general plan that we have in 1996, that plan, that's the only one we have right now that was ever approved. At our last meeting, I heard something that made me wonder what the rules are right now as far as development that's happening now, people's property designations. Are they all in limbo because we're working on a new general plan? Or when people come before the-
No, they're all, they are what they are.
Okay, so if somebody comes before the commission, and in 1996 plan, that's the only one we have, that's what we use?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because it didn't sound right. Thank you.
Anyone else? We are moving on to the consent agenda, of which there is none. So then we are going to go to our public hearing, which is a continued hearing on the land use element. I don't know, Peter, you want to, is there, where did we leave off?
I believe we left off at, I think we finished reviewing the old land use goal two and associated policies, so we'd be on the bottom of page 16, under goal LU3.
I think you're, we left off at 2.4.
2.4, okay. And that's where we left off. And I really don't have anything else to add. I think that we'll continue to work through the element, and then I'll bring back to you the changes that you recommended for verification that this, that it represents the direction that I received from you over the past, the past meeting today, and however long it takes for us to get through this.
So you want to continue from 2.4, or do you want to go catch up to the notes from-
No, because I haven't been able to finish all those changes yet. So I think what we'll do is we'll go through the whole thing, and then I'll bring the whole thing back to you.
So, but we're going, I mean, just to kind of catch us up, we're going to start with infrastructure and land use, right? And the goal being, I recall, there was only one revision there was, "A pattern of growth and development that effectively utilizes the plan provision of infrastructure facilities and public services."
I'm sorry, where are you, Font?
That was goal LU2.
Right.
So we made one amendment to that, struck the word adequate.
Right, was that, I'm just sort of kind of catching us up so that we're starting at the same point.
Oh, you're on 2.4?
Yes, on the land use, too.
Oh, LU2.
I'm starting at, you know, let's start with the goal. Kind of a refresh ourselves, and the public as well.
And you're reminding us of the edits that we had in mind for that one?
The only edit I had was the elimination of adequate. So it would be, "A pattern of growth and development that effectively utilizes the plan provision of infrastructure facilities and public services." Is that what you had as well?
Yes, that's what I have.
I think you are right about that.
Okay.
Then I had a note under LU2.4 was-
Well, can we just kind of, just go our way down?
There is no 2, I don't think we have any notes on 2.1, 2.2, or 2.3.
Well, I did have one on 2.1, so let's see. And maybe that was just me, I don't know if it got in the record, but-
Go ahead.
One was, so land use 2.1 was, "Locate community-oriented services and amenities, schools, libraries, parks, civic facilities, county offices in and near community, town, centers." And then, "To encourage community vitality."
Right.
Right?
That's the draft.
Okay. I had struck out "to encourage community vitality," but I like it. I think we should leave it in there. So then LU2.2, there were no edits. Okay. So LU2.3, there were no edits.
Correct.
Okay. And then LU2.4, that's where we're at.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, yes, sure, hold on. Yeah. There you go, Ted. No, you don't like that one?
Not much, not much left, Joy.
Oh, there's not much on that. Here you go. Sorry. Between the two of them. So land use 2.3, I'm sorry, 2.4. Were there, we had discussion on this. This is where we left it. What was the discussion? We were-
There was quite a bit of discussion.
Okay.
Then I have more.
Okay.
Me, too.
Well, why don't you just dig in there, Kelly?
Okay, 2.4. Leads off with, "Infrastructure such as water and sewer, et cetera, should not be extended outside existing developed areas," and it goes on. First comment is, "I don't believe the county provides water, and I don't believe the county provides sewer services, and so I'm having trouble understanding why the general plan should be imposing restrictions on the extensions of water and sewer services when the county doesn't do any of that." And it would appear by this draft that the county's general plan would be trying to direct people such as CCWD how to do their business. And I don't think it can do that. That's point one. Point two, actually, if I could respond to that, when a local agency does a capital improvement program, they are required to find consistency with the county general plan. So it is the county's business to direct growth and to coordinate with providers of infrastructure, when it's not the county, to ensure that their plans are consistent with the county's general plan. So if we say, and when, I don't know that they do that, but the state law requires that when a capital improvement program is adopted by a local agency, it's run by this body to make a finding of consistency with the general plan. So whenever an agency adopts a capital improvement plan or acquires land to make improvements, they need to make a finding of consistency with the general plan.
So would an example of be that was the school, that they just had, they had to make a finding of consistency with our general plan?
Yes.
So that would be an example? We just recently heard.
In this one, and maybe Mr. Wooster's second point is related, but while we're on this one, doesn't that put us in a chicken and the egg kind of a situation? This element, this component says, "Shall not be extended outside existing developed areas unless those areas are contiguous to existing ones." Infrastructure such as water and sewer, is Mr. Wooster's point. So if CCWD, to be consistent with our general plan, take away the consistency part, if CCWC says, "Yeah, we're willing to extend water and sewer to various areas that it doesn't exist now, we don't have a problem with that," then how do you get consistency with that philosophy and a statement like this one? If, to be consistent, we're saying, this one says, "Water and sewer and high-capacity roads should not be extended," and they say, "Well, we can extend it, we don't have a problem with that," how do you get those two statements in line with each other?
So the purpose of a policy like this would be to try to prevent sort of leapfrog development, you know, it's the incremental increase of a community area, so it's, you know, within or contiguous to.
I understand the aim of it, and if I-
So there's sort of two-fold. One, we would, as we review projects, we would look at this policy and say, "Well, is it, does the project require the extension of services? Yes or no? Yes, then is it contiguous to, or is it within a community area where the service is already provided?" And if it's yes, then it would be consistent with the general plan. The same, and so it is in a way sort of chicken and egg in that the, the agency, the other, the district would be, would be providing that service, but before they can do that, they need to get approval from the county. But similarly, if they were just to, on their own, say, "We want to provide service to just to, on their own, say, we want to provide service to some area that's beyond the existing urban development area, and there'd be really no reason for them to do it on their own. It would be because of a project proposal.
But if the project proposal is up against a policy worded such as this one is, then there's your chicken and the egg. CCWD, for example, is capable and willing to do it, but this says we don't want it. So aren't we hamstringing them? We're...
Well, we are, we are, we would be directing where we think it's appropriate to allow development to occur.
By virtue of water and sewer?
By virtue of water and sewer, yes.
But if water and sewer says, we don't have a problem with it.
But they don't, they don't extend water and sewer in a vacuum.
I understand that. But we're saying, we're saying, we are, we want to limit ourselves to what they have in place. We're making it contingent upon that system. And if that system is, is not the problem, is not, is not a restriction, then how does this language make any sense? I think that's Mr. Wooster's point. He can, he can jump in here.
Well, I was, I was kind of getting there. I understand Mr. Maurer's point. But if you go on to this, it does allow the extension of water and sewer to areas where future development is anticipated by the general plan as reflected in the general plan use designation. So if we have a situation where a developer comes in and wants to have water and sewer extended to an area that permits it under the general plan use designation, this is no problem to him. Now, if he wants to develop it, he's going to have to get a general plan amendment for any other area. In other words, he goes to a place that has, that is designated resource production. He says, I would like to build a golf course and associated condominiums there. To do that, he's got to get that land use designation changed to permit. And once he gets the land use designation changed to permit it, LU 2.4 is no roadblock to him. And therefore, this seems to me to be kind of an empty, an empty scarecrow because I don't see how it would have any effect in the real world.
Well, I'm not sure I would agree. At the, the act of amending the general plan, you still need to find consistency with the general plan policies. And so if the golf course condominium project were discontiguous to existing development, we would say it would be inappropriate to approve that general plan amendment because it's going to require public sewer and water. And it's not contiguous to existing development. And therefore, we don't want to see that kind of leapfrog development. And we do not approve the general plan. You don't, the general plan really doesn't go as a sort of separate standalone project. You have to look at the whole of the project.
I understand that. But if that is what happened, he couldn't do his development 2.4 or no 2.4. He can't get the land use designation changed to do it. You don't need 2.4 to do that.
Well, I think 2.4 is, you know, provides the, part of the direction on whether or not it's appropriate to amend the general plan.
Well, but doesn't the, doesn't the state permit the county to amend the general plan four times a year?
Well, we can make any amendments that we think is appropriate, as long as it's internally consistent. But if we say, if we have a policy that says we're not going to, and maybe it's the language of the way this is worded, not going to approve development that necessitates the extension of public services, sewer and water, beyond or not contiguous to existing development, then... Lost my train of thought there. If our, if our policies say we want to direct growth to certain areas and this is, you know, where it's appropriate, and someone comes in with a project that meets those policy goals, then yes, we can change the land use map.
Well, this doesn't, this doesn't say that it has to be contiguous to existing communities.
Correct.
It's, it can be contiguous to existing communities, or it can be in areas where future development is anticipated by the general plan is reflected in the land use designation. Now, once you change the land use designation, you are completely consistent with 2.4.
Right. But in order to change the land use designation, you have to do a general plan amendment, and you must find consistency with the general plan to amend it.
Which direction to 2.4?
Obviously, you know, the map changes, but you still have to look at consistency with all the policies of the general plan when you do a general plan amendment. You can't do something that's internally inconsistent with policy goals of saying, here's where we think growth is appropriate, here's where it's not, here's our resource production area that we want to, you know, promote and protect. So just sort of a willy-nilly amend the general plan doesn't, it doesn't work that way. You have to look at consistency with the policies and goal objectives of the plan to say, this is appropriate to amend this land use designation.
If that's the case, then he would, the developer would not get the land use designation amended quite apart from 2.4, correct? Nothing in 2.4 restricts amending the map.
Right.
There's other things out there that may, and if those other things...
I'll take that back. I think it would. If, if the map amendment necessitates an extension of public services and utilities beyond and/or discontiguous to, then it would be inconsistent. And it would provide guidance towards whether to approve or deny that amendment.
I can't read 2.4 that way because it is, it is in the disjunctive. In other words, you can extend water and sewer and roads outside existing developed areas if they are contiguous to existing communities or in areas where future development is anticipated by the general plan is reflected in the land use designation to serve existing non-contiguous communities or are essential to public health or safety. You meet any one of those requirements and you're, you're good under 2.4. Right?
Yes.
Okay. So if, if there is a constraint outside of 2.4 that would limit the general plan amendment to permit development where it couldn't otherwise be done, then 2.4 serves no purpose because a developer can't develop anyway. On the other hand, if he's entitled, consistent with the rest of the general plan, to get the land use designation changed to prevent his development, he is consistent with 2.4. So I don't think 2.4 does anything other than scare people.
I think the other thing it does is that we talked about initially in this discussion is that this is also informing purveyors of water and sewer services about the county's policy. So that it gives them a heads up about what the policy is in terms of where we're hoping, helping to direct development. So that it's not like, wow, I don't know, should we extend lines or should we like ramp up or should we expand our sewer plant? Well, who knows? You know, I don't know because, you know, we don't really, or extend lines in certain directions or certain communities because it's, it isn't, it provides them some policy direction as far as future planning for their district's extension of services.
You're, you're speaking, it provides direction to whom?
To CCWD, CPUD, sanitary districts. You know, if, if, if we didn't have a policy about directing growth to existing communities or existing non-contiguous communities, then how would they plan in their CIPs? They could just think that we're going to allow development anywhere. And that's, hopefully, that's not what we're suggesting. So it does provide them some direction about what they can anticipate in terms of capital improvement needs.
If there needs to be some, some information to CCWD, for example, that, that you need to submit whatever extensions you're going to do to the county for a finding of consistency with the general plan, I'm sure that can be done other than by 2.4. You just send them a letter saying, oh, by the way, state law requires you do this. But see, your, your comments and Peter's comments keep coming back to a kind of an assumption that 2.4 is, is directing growth or restricting growth outside areas either now developed or contiguous. And it's not, that is not what it says. What it's saying is, is if you're consistent with the map, okay, you're good. And it doesn't matter whether it's contiguous or not. That's what it says. And that's probably what it should say. Because otherwise, you could have, developer could come in, he could get a land use designation changed from resource production to whatever is required for his development. Everybody's good to go. And then somebody says, oh, wait a minute, this is not contiguous, and so you can't do it? That's, I don't think this is how this process works. If you're, if you're good on the map, you're good to go.
But again, it gets back to when you change that. Now, you're right, if it's good on the map, you're good to go. But if someone proposes a change to the map, there is no policy language that talks about whether or not it's appropriate to make that change if the change necessitates an extension beyond what we've identified of those kinds of services.
But 2.4 doesn't provide you that policy language.
I think that it does.
I think it does too.
All I can say is if it's this confusing, throw it out.
I don't find it confusing.
I think it invites, I think it invites a problem down the road in the way that the confusion is being discussed right here, right now. But I would add another, I would ask Mr. Maurer another point about changes to the general plan and the internal consistency issue that comes up when you do that. Are you saying that with our ability to amend the general plan four times a year, a subject of an amendment has to be then internally consistent with other existing elements of the general plan?
Yes.
But isn't that the purpose or the ability of the county to amend a general plan and, and make that amendment consistent throughout? If otherwise, how do you amend a general plan?
It doesn't mean you can't change policy language. It just means that if you are making changes, you have to look at the whole of the general plan.
Agreed.
Yeah. And so let's say, for example, we'll use this specific issue. If we adopt a policy that says we don't want to see infrastructure and services extended beyond existing community boundaries or contiguous to. And we have project proposals that say, you know, gee, over here, that isn't contiguous to, but still would be a really great location for some type of project. And it needs to have public sewer and water because of the density and intensity of use. We could amend our general plan policy to say, you know, that's not beneficial to us for whatever reasons we have in, in our general plan, that we're trying to promote economic development, that whatever, whatever benefits we might get from that project necessitate modifications to our general plan policies. And we go through a general plan amendment process to look at that. And we say, okay, well, how does that then relate to our public facilities and services element? How does that relate to our circulation element? And if we can make it all fit, then we can change the general plan.
Okay. But that's, to me, that's a different message than what you were giving us before. If the amendment isn't, isn't internally consistent, then you can't do it.
Right.
No, you could make the, you could make the general plan consistent with your, your proposed change.
We can amend the general plan essentially whenever we feel like it. Yeah, there's some limitations four times a year on the land use element and certain other times, other elements. But if we think that our general plan is not working for us, we can change it. It's our plan. Just like a business plan, if a business is operating and gee, the plan that we thought wasn't working for us, well, let's change it by all means. I think we, we get caught into a trap of we adopt a plan and it's set in stone for 20 years, we don't do anything about it, and then suddenly, oh, it's outdated, we've got to go through this tremendous exercise to adopt a new plan. We should be looking at this on a regular basis, see how's it working for us? And do we need to modify the policies? Do we need to modify the land use map, the circulation maps? All those kinds of things need to be looked at regularly to see how's it working for us. But if we have some basic policies that we agree that these are good for the county, and someone comes in with a project that is inconsistent with that, then, you know, that's the, the first step of the process is, well, you know, is it consistent with where we want to go? Yes, we still want to go in the direction the plan is taking us, though we're not going to approve this project because it's inconsistent. Gee, that's a really, or alternatively, that's a really good idea, but our plan is constraining us and we want to see this kind of development. Maybe we need to revisit these policies. So it gets back to the question of what kind of development pattern do we want to see in the county? What kind of constraints, if any, do we want to place on new development? Do we want to restrain growth to where it's cost effective to serve it? Or should we just say, hey, if the developer thinks it's, it can pencil out and they want to pay for it, you know, that's, that works. I mean, it's, we have, we're at the stage now where we, you guys are setting the policy. And, you know, what's in the best interest over the next 10 to 20 years of the county and how we, we develop?
That, that's kind of the policy statement that you mentioned a few weeks ago.
Yes.
Right? It's, it's, it's the basic question.
Absolutely.
And the problem I have with the question is that I think to a large extent, it was answered. It's been answered. It was addressed in the joint commission board meeting. That's where it got its start. And it was addressed in more detail when this commission drafted and passed the guiding principles that were also passed by board supervisors.
Actually, they didn't, they didn't take it up.
I'm sorry?
They did not take it up. They, they...
They haven't, I haven't done that yet?
They pointed because it was right in the midst of the fire and they said, we got too much on our mind right now.
I was dreaming then. I, I, I was dreaming that they...
It was scheduled. It was scheduled.
In any case, this commission...
Yes.
Passed it. And, and it calls for flexibility, all right? And I can't remember all the language that we, that we worked very hard on. But what I would not like to do is keep answering that question over and over again for the next six months, or however long it takes us to get through this general plan. I see this, this 2.4 as being inconsistent with my take on, on what we came up with for guiding principles. Notwithstanding Mr. Wooster's, I think, learned take on the, on the legal implications of the way that it's written here. It is a scarecrow kind of statement in that way. And I also note that 2.5, which is a new statement, a new statement that you wrote, don't know when it was added, but I, was it...
This was added between the end of the public comment period and before it was, you know, so these were, all the edits that were in this document were based on comments received during the public comment period.
Which...
From December to March.
Yeah, post 214 draft.
Right.
Right. Adequate infrastructure, facilities and public services shall be in place or shall be extended or provided as necessary to serve a project as a requirement of the project approval. To me, that's enough.
I would say one more thing about 2.4. I think I made this point earlier, which is the way it reads... I think I made this point earlier, which is, the way it reads, it doesn't allow CCWD or another water purveyor to extend water services for agriculture unless it's contiguous to existing communities or in an existing community, or not resource production, which is where you need it for ag. The way this is written, you can't do it.
Well, if it's the commission's desire to retain that policy along these lines, we could clarify that, so we're talking about infrastructure serving urban development.
You know, I guess the, your comment, Commissioner Tuno, that the question was asked and answered, I'm not so sure that that's really the case, and if so, I'm not so sure. I would agree with what you think the answer is. So what is the answer to this question of what kind of development pattern do we want to see in the county? When you mentioned that you thought it was inconsistent with the guiding principles, particularly how?
Because it suggests an inflexible approach to future growth. Here's, let me try to put it this way. We agree that infill is desirable, right? And by the way, it's also economical, so it's going to happen anyway because it's the most economical thing to do. If you have a project that is suitable for an infill parcel, you're more likely to choose the infill parcel for your project because the services are there, it's more economical to build there. So the economics are going to drive that anyway, right? It's also more economical to locate a project contiguous to existing infrastructure for the reasons that we all, that are plain. The roads are there, the sewer is right next to you, the water's right next to you, it's an economical decision to make, as long as it's suitable for your project in every other way that's important to you. So that's going to happen by virtue of market forces also. What I believe the direction that we have, that this commission has arrived at is that we would entertain, we would look at projects that are not contiguous to existing infrastructure on a case-by-case basis. We don't preclude someone coming to us with a great idea for a great project, but it lies outside the, it doesn't fit with the existing map, but it's, but low and behold, wouldn't it be wonderful? Why wouldn't we allow a pathway for that project to be heard? Why would we preclude that discussion? My take is that we should not preclude that discussion. We should not throw scarecrows into our general plan for an entity to scare them away from the county when they might have something that would benefit all of us tremendously. Not all of us, it's not important that it benefit all of us, that it be appropriate and beneficial to the county in some way. So that's my take on flexibility. And I don't think it could be denied that flexibility is at least in our guiding principles.
To me, that's sort of a guideline for chaos. I mean, our job really here is to...
Guideline for chaos is that we look at a project on a case-by-case basis?
Yes, exactly. So from an economic development standpoint, you ask any business person that is looking to do a project, housing project, commercial development, doesn't really matter, what they're looking for is, tell me what, you know, just tell me what the rules are, tell me what the guidelines are, and by the way, I do kind of want to know what's going to happen next door to me. I do want to know what's going to happen down the road. I do want to know, I want to have a pretty good picture before I make this investment about what I can anticipate as my neighborhood. I also don't want to have to come to you every time I want to do something and say, hey, oh, by the way, is it okay? I want to have some general guidelines that tells me that I'm allowed to do this, I'm not allowed to do that, that I'm going to have a neighbor here that's compatible with me. You know, it's all about creating a consistency of direction. I mean, if you're suggesting that we have this sort of Wild West land use pattern where everybody has to come in and we're all judged on an individual case-by-case basis, that's crazy-making. We won't see any development in this county.
Well, isn't that what the map is for, in large part?
Yes, but then, you know, when someone comes in and they want to have a change to the map, what do you base it on, Kelly? What do you look back at to say, does this make sense? And is this what we promised our people? You know, is this the promise of all of those property owners, that when they bought their property and they're enjoying, their quiet enjoyment of their property, that we have assured them that there will be compatibility with neighbors, that we've assured them that their roads aren't going to be impacted because we're just saying, wow, I like your project, bring it on, because it's going to provide more jobs? You know, at what, you know, at what, you know, what's the cost? You know, our job is to create some consistency, flexibility, yes, but provide some basis for people to be able to make an investment in this county. And looking at it on a case-by-case basis, I think is absolutely the wrong way to do it. Mary?
I don't think 2.4 does it for you. That's my big point.
Your statements just now, Vaughn, go in direct conflict with 2.4. Everything you just said is opposite to what that, 2.4 is saying that we've restricted it to inside the community, and you're sitting here telling me you want to know what the zoning is around my property? Well, that's what the map, the general map is for. So if you're going to look at an investment here, you're going to look at that map, and you're going to look at the zoning around you. What they're trying to say what the inconsistencies are is that you have to stay within the community. And you're saying it's okay for everybody to look at their zoning and go with the general guidelines, okay? Well, if I look at my zoning and I'm not in that community, I'm five miles out, you're saying, what you just said was you should be able to build within your zoning and look at your neighbors around you. But 2.4 says, you're not building five miles out, doesn't matter what your zoning is. So you have just, I mean, what you said was in direct conflict of 2.4. To me, if you, if you're saying you want to protect the zoning and everybody around it, and they shouldn't have to be zilly-nilly and come in for every project, well, this infrastructure and water and sewer and capacity and roads, you've just brought all of it to a screaming halt. This is an absolute no-growth policy. It tells people to stay away, and honestly, anybody that looked at our county and coming here and looked at this general plan, this says, don't come here, we don't want you here. And unless you're going to be right next to my one little community. So if I'm five miles out and I have the proper zoning to be able to build, my zoning doesn't matter. It's okay for me to pay my taxes, it's okay for you to use my tax dollars for your community infrastructure, but it's not okay for me to build. You're going to put a massive amount of pressure on our assessor because she's going to have a lot of properties to reassess on tax values, because I wouldn't want to be paying my tax values five miles out, but yet 2.4 says, no, you aren't going to build. We have no land values whatsoever if we are not allowed to build on it throughout the entire county, except for in that community.
You effectively create resource production everywhere else, everywhere that's, even if it's not zoned as such.
Why have the zoning? I mean, if the general plan, if we're going to pass 2.4 and we're only going to be able to build next to the communities, everything outside of that needs to have a zoning put in place that's called, no, can't do that here, unless you're going to do a general plan amendment. And anybody coming forward that is even brave enough to spend the amount of dollars it would cost for a general plan amendment is going to look at it and say, you've made it so difficult for somebody to do something here. A general plan amendment is not going to be an easy process. You can tout doing it four times a year all you want, but it's not going to be something that's a simple process. You're talking about planning hearings, appeals, supervisors' hearings, appeals, it's going to be a nightmare. Nobody's going to get a general plan amendment, so if we don't make this friendly now, then we might as well put up those little circle signs with slashes through them that says, don't come here.
Well, and actually, that's why through this whole process, people have submitted, you know, individual requests for changes on their properties through this general plan update process.
And those recommendations and those people that have submitted it are asking for their zoning either not to change?
Well, again, we're just talking about land uses. We're not talking about zoning.
Right.
At this point, just to clarify.
Okay, and you and I had this conversation two weeks ago when we were going over the land uses versus zoning. Those land uses affect the zoning, period.
Well, they both have to be consistent.
They're tied together.
Absolutely.
So I don't, I mean, you can't say to me, it's the zoning, when I know it's going to impact all the way across the board. You're looking at the short term, I'm looking at the long term. I mean, because I'm seeing how it flows out and rolls out. It doesn't just stop at, you're in this area and this is what you can do, in my mind, and it stops there with you. That's where it stops. When you bring up this chart and you look at it, that's it. And I don't see it that way. I see it going farther out.
I'm not sure I'm following you, but okay.
It seems like 2.4, though, limits most everything to infill only.
Yes.
No, I don't believe so. I mean, it also...
Show me the language in 2.4 where it doesn't say you can go outside. There is no language in there. It stops it right there, Vaughn. If you can point out to me how that's written and that language, that it allows...
Right here, to serve future development as anticipated by the general plan, right there, that goes outside.
Finish the sentence, Vaughn, because it doesn't, it stops it. Future development is anticipated in the general plan.
As reflected by the general plan, I would just say map instead of land use.
To serve existing non-contiguous communities.
Existing, right, non-contiguous communities and those that are essential to public health and safety.
Do you see that?
You know, it's...
So the intent of this policy was that, yes, it would direct infrastructure growth to within the communities, immediately outside, contiguous to, or the edit, which was suggested by Commissioner Tuno in his comment letter to me, was that, well, what if you have an existing community and they need service? Would it be appropriate to extend service to say Mount Mount, something like that? Yes, so that was added. Or to serve public health and safety. You've got existing failing septic systems, you need to extend sewer to that to protect the public health. Those would be sort of the four options for extending services. So within, immediately adjacent to, so sort of the gradual incremental expansion of the community.
And anything outside of that would require a general plan amendment, a complete rewrite.
So the map, and maybe, maybe we need to be looking at the map, you know, at the same time as we're looking at these policies, but I think the map will be significantly changed from the draft that was released in December, that we've got areas that are existing communities, some areas that are shown for future development outside the existing boundaries of those communities. And so it's not just simply, here's the existing line that's not beyond that. I will stand by this policy as being a reasonable and cost-effective means to extend infrastructure to serve land use. But it's your policy choice as to whether or not we want to link infrastructure extension to land use.
And it gets, really gets back at, and this is a discussion we had months ago, about the multitude of people that attended town hall meeting after town hall meeting throughout this county that said unequivocally, unequivocally, I have a hard time saying that word, that growth should be directed to existing communities.
And we've done that, and Ms. Tetchell read the policy of...
But we haven't done it if we don't do this.
No, we have done that, because when she read the policy, and I listened very carefully, and I wrote down the words she read, promote, encourage, those were the exact same words that we put into our guiding principles. And we can promote, and I think everybody on this panel was good with promoting and encouraging. I'm not, I'm not in agreement with putting a drop-dead hammer down on this, that if somebody wants to do something outside of that area, they have to do a general plan amendment.
And again, I think it supports what this community and its constituents have said about directing growth.
Okay, so you're going to tell me you had five, six, 700, I don't care how many people at those meetings, I care, but that came out wrong. I care that those peoples were at that meetings, but you got 1,000 people that wrote in comments that couldn't go to those meetings because they have jobs. Do they not count?
Well, I think if they counted...
They're writing in because they don't approve of what we've done here.
Lisa, I think if they counted, that we probably wouldn't have this policy in here right now, because it would have been inputted by Mr. Maurer through this public, written comment.
He hasn't even gotten to the 1,000 comments all the way yet, so...
Yes, he has, they're all in here, aren't they?
With, with...
Yes.
Ben, Chair.
So this is consistent with...
My 1,000 people in comments here.
A few weeks ago, Tonya Dawson spoke at this commission during the general comments period about those meetings that you mentioned. And I attempted to ask her a question for clarification, and I was shut down because it wasn't an agenda item. Now, we can revisit that whole period of time if you want to, that whole, that whole dynamic of what happened in those meetings and how they were manipulated by Mentor Harnish, and the outcome was preordained, in my opinion. We can revisit that whole, we can make it an agenda item if you want to, to really flesh it out.
Well, I don't know, I personally attended a lot of them, so I don't think I need to hear how I was influenced by Mentor Harnish.
If you want to hear from a public, someone who was also at those meetings, and what happened in those meetings, and how they were manipulated, we can have that discussion. But if you're going to say that this is a result of those meetings, it's pursuant to the public desires, then we're going to have to stop and have that discussion.
Wow. So, I don't know, I'm beating my head against the wall here. Obviously, I think I'm the only one that has, is sort of, other than Peter, maybe in support of this 2.4. So at this point, maybe we should ask the public to, unless you guys want to talk about it further, to weigh in on 2.4?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, okay. So are there members of the public that would like to come and talk about directing growth to existing communities?
Hi, Vicki Reinkie. You know, where do you begin? But I want to...
You've got five minutes, Vicki.
I know.
Okay, so you better get going.
First of all, I always want to talk about the bigger picture and some of the comments that were made. Yes, there are different philosophies out there, and yes, some of us believe that we should allow for some growth. Do we want this to be the city down? No, we wouldn't have moved here if we wanted to live in a city, we'd go move to the city. So that's not an issue. But there is another faction, and we all know what it is. We've seen it in other areas in our state of California, and that is to stop growth completely and to move it all into the center of already existing cities. That's just a philosophy, it's out there, it's in our state, it's everywhere. So we know these facts. Is that what we want here? And that's kind of the question, you know, do we want to keep this a rural community? And yes, maybe have some more growth out in some other property besides right next to. It kind of grows naturally, what David Tuno talked about. I had notes as I was listening, writing down, and some of this, I said, come about naturally. Growth comes about naturally in a lot of ways because of market, because of, developer's not going to come in here and build an apartment building if there's nobody to move in. And where does that make sense? Probably in a town center, because it's more local, because people might need to get to a grocery store and not want to live way out in the country. So, again, there's the big picture of the philosophies. The other big picture thing is, we get to elect officials in our county to reflect what we believe as... we believe as citizens. Right now, we have elected a lot of people who don't believe in controlling everybody's lives, controlling where they're going to grow, where they're going to put their developments, what's going to happen to my personal property, and not me, but, you know, people who own pieces of property, to be told that your property has to be built on a certain way or not at all. So, that's kind of where we are. I think that's why we're even revisiting this general plan, is because we have that philosophy in this county, and now we have elected people that will carry that philosophy out. Planning commissioners were appointed by these elected officials. So, like it or not, but that's how I see that we're, we just want to be more of a, and I don't even know if that's the right word, freedom-friendly or whatever, but we, we want to respect people's rights. Oh, my goodness, that's a loud word.
It's not for me.
So, anyway, based on that bigger picture about respecting people's properties, yes, a general plan needs to be done, but in rural communities, some of the beauty of it is drive-through some of these towns. There's a business here, there's a house here, because there weren't general plans in those days in the 1800s and, but that's kind of the appeal of, of rural communities. So, we're going to change all that and make everything so developed, and here's this, and here's that, like they do in the cities where we all moved away from? Anyway, that's my soapbox on that. So, anyway, 2.4, my note when I read that was, "It limits growth, period." Like Lisa talked about, it, it's written there to say, "No more growth outside of these circles." It needs to be taken off this general plan. We don't need to, to have to control everything that happens in this, in this county, because we believe people make good choices. Some people don't agree with that, but I do. I think people make good choices. I think developers that come in here aren't here to ruin our communities. They're here to, to make it better. And we get the opportunity to come, they come before the planning commission, before they do a project, to make sure that project fits with our community. And that's where those decisions happen. But if we restrict property right up front, here's the map that goes along with the general plan draft. It's all green. Green is resource development, working lands, resource management. This is what they want our county to look like. That's why this is written here, because then, when we go to make a map, you can't make a map that has anything growing outside of those town centers. So, what you guys were talking about, you're right. Please stay with what you believe, because I think you're, I think you're right. We don't need a county that's all green.
Vicki, a minute.
Okay. So, again, I just want you to, 2.4 and 2.5 need to be gone. They're just restrictive. And I think we're heading towards a general plan that's more general in nature, and that's what I think mo, the majority of people in this community would like to see.
Thank you.
Greg Meyer from the Copperopolis community. Really, a brief comment. When, looking objectively at this, when you combine confusing adversarial language like 2.4 in a general plan with a wholesale reduction of land use designations to resource production and that sort of thing, and you bring that not, not miles away from communities, but within the spheres of influence of communities, anybody from the outside's going to look at that as a place they don't want to go to. It's, as, as was spoke of earlier, if you want to be the county of no, that's the way to do it.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dennis Mills. I'd like to talk to you about 2.4 from an economic development perspective. And with that, just give you some history. I had the opportunity over forty years ago to cite over sixty restaurants in the Midwest using a criteria of about three hundred questions.
Did you what with the restaurants?
Site. In other words, place, new restaurants and locations. I can tell you probably that only three of them failed. With that being said, it's important to understand that in that criteria, the least amount of government involvement in that sighting and the least amount of expense in that sighting was critical. And when I cited those locations, I wasn't in community centers. I would be popping up a restaurant with a twenty-year lease, three to five miles away from the, at the edge of the town, and people would look around and they'd go, "What the heck are they thinking?" And sure enough, the rest of the businesses would come and join that location. And it, it happened over and over again. I mean, we went from six operations in west of the, or east of the Mississippi to sixty in Chicago alone in just a span of three years. But we stayed the heck out of communities and community centers. And the goal was to expand and get our, our place into the market where we were reaching the most amount of customers in the demographic base that we were looking for. So, as, as you look at 2.4 and you say, "You can't go beyond a community center," you've just shut off the economic development potential to anybody else that might consider some great idea that no one else has thought of. So, I just want you to, you know, Lisa, you were right on. You've got to be very cautious about how tight you want to wind this, because I can tell you from a business perspective, there is no way that I would consider doing a general plan amendment or the costs involved, even forty years ago. It just was out of, out of my, my goals. I wouldn't waste my time. You want growth in this county, and you have to do things that keep that growth pattern coming here and try to keep the impediments out of its way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dave Haley, representing Castle &amp; Cook in Copperopolis. What we're concerned about is what is the definition of the community boundary? And we have, I'll give you an example, two projects. One is Copper Valley Ranch that was submitted to the county and deemed complete with the direction to go out and do a lot of studies to get it into the development pattern. We have since spent about three million dollars on that project, plus the cost of land, to do that. And that project is within the road systems of the circulation pattern example. Tuscan Hills was approved based on a secondary access through Copper Valley Ranch. Copper Valley Ranch is adjacent to CCWD, Saddle Creek, and Tuscan Hills, and its property is designated for water tanks in order to provide water to Oak Canyon Ranch. So, we look at it as part of the community center, not resource production, that's what has been re-designated. Another example is our Sawmill Lake project, which is adjacent to Copper Town Square and the proposed high school site. We look at that project as within the community center. We have agreements with the county that were acted upon by us to re-designate that land as community center. We've since moved forward and acted on our part, gave land for Little John Road Extension, and it's within, adjacent to the town square where sewer and water systems have already been built to handle Sawmill Lake, yet it's been re-designated as, as a resource production. So, what we're concerned about is the land use patterns within what we feel is a community center need to be upheld, not just realign the community center boundary to exclude our projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Colleen Platt with My Valley Springs and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. I apologize for missing the beginning of the meeting. I might have missed some critical things. I'm sorry if I say anything that doesn't reflect that. Many of us have been very concerned about the directions the planning commission has been talking on the general plan update. The direction of the original focus of the general plan update, obviously, is being questioned, and some changes have already been made to it and some of the work you've already done. And looking back at how we all got started and what the Board of Supervisors originally gave this direction back in 2007, the Board of Supervisors in a general plan workshop at which every, a lot of people attended, but the Board of Supervisors gave the direction for updating goals and policies for future development, to limit the use of groundwater and onsite septic systems. That was sort of the original main focus, was a concern about groundwater and septic. And the direction was to encourage development where served by public service, public surface water and public sewer. That's kind of what got, got us going on this whole path. They wanted growth to be guided to existing community centers and not encouraged in remote areas outside and away from these public services. To do this, the general plan needs policies and goals that reflect this. The current board has called for flexibility, yes, but they have not given new direction on this. They have not given direction to abandon a concern for groundwater and septic systems. Our calaveras foothills are a finite resource, and they deserve protection. Our groundwater and surface water are finite resources that deserve protection. Our soils and lands are not junk. Our foothill and mountains contain working landscapes of small farms, vineyards, orchards, ranches, and range lands, and forest lands. Our county should not be developed helter-skelter just because it, because it is not prime, big-scale ag farmland. Our county policy for development should not be too vague in general or be set up with built-in exceptions, otherwise, we don't have a policy. We don't need to open up development to whoever has the most money and the latest big idea to sell. The general plan, excuse me. Once these, once these calaveras lands are converted to urban or suburban or commercial development, they are lost forever to agriculture and ranching. With that loss, we chip away at our ability to grow food and protect our watersheds and our groundwater and our open space and our wildlife. You are not precluding a discussion of a new project by setting policies. Flexibility is built into the general plan, to these guidelines. As we've already talked about, we have a process to allow different development ideas to occur. We have the general plan amendment process, which you've talked about. They can, you and the board can consider new development, development ideas outside of community centers and existing land uses. If you think it's an exceptionally good idea, you can consider it, and so can the board. You can, if, you can, as Peter has said, you can amend the general plan policy, or you can study the project and say there are overriding considerations on this project that, that benefit the county in ways that are more important. So, you can do this already in the existing general plan process. You don't need to fill that into policies. You need to make your policies clear. Okay, I think I've already sent you. Another thing that came up listening to your discussions, we don't, we're not, we're not going to be limiting growth to circles, because we already have scattered growth all over the county. We already have a lot of scattered communities. We already have a lot of scattered parcels and suburban residential developments. So, it's, it's too late to say, you know, we're going to keep it in circles, because it's already out there. The point is, we don't need more of that kind of random scattered development that hurts our groundwater, and it hurts our ranching, and it hurts our agriculture. You can allow it if you need to, and, you know, if you think a development is wonderful, there's a process to go ahead and do that. As Dennis Mills said, if you do allow something to go out there in the middle of nowhere, the rest of the businesses will come to join it. So, you are encouraging random scattered development. If you just make this policy loose enough, somebody can do that. That's what's happened in the past. That's what's happened over the last thirty to forty years that has led us to some of our problems. So, we're trying to keep from doing that in the future. So, personally, for the groups that, that I join and represent, we ask commissioners to retain the direction of the draft general plan policies that guide growth to community centers. They use land efficiently. They minimize costs to taxpayers, which is a very big concern for all of us, and they protect the public health and safety. We, please retain these policies as much as you can. Tweak them if you need to, but retain these policies that Peter's put in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mickey Williamson. I live in a community called Murphy's Pines in the scrub brush between Murphy's and Angels Camp, and I just wanted to give a personal account of why I think the kind of growth that Colleen just talked about, that we want to prohibit, is not a good idea. Murphy's Pines was, I don't know the whole history of it, but as far as I can tell, developed by someone who owned a bunch of that land and sold it to develop into five-acre lot, to divide into five-acre lots, which it was, which people then purchased and built on or didn't build on. There are many lots there that are not yet built on, many that are. But we have no, no services. Everyone is on a well. Everyone is on septic. I don't know yet of any septic failures, but I do know a number of well failures. We have no county roads. We have our own homeowners association maintain roads, which are actually not maintained. We have a very hard time, first of all, getting people to pay their dues and getting people to be on the board to manage the association. We would be in big trouble in a fire. The Butte Fire stopped about a mile and a half from where I live. Had it gone down one more ridge and up another, I would not have a home, because there is no way to stop a fire where I live. It is so overgrown, and none of us can afford to do what needs to be done to that land. So, just from a personal perspective, that is the kind of development that's happened in this county that these policies were designed to protect us from. So, as Colleen said, I really encourage you not to abandon them. I think they're very important. And so, I just wanted to add that. And just as an aside, if we do want to have a discussion about the community meetings held by Mentor Harnish, I was at most of them, and I do not feel they were manipulated by anyone. There was a large outpouring from the people there of what they wanted to see. I still have notes in my files of exactly what came out of every meeting in Murphy's, and they support the policies in this general plan. And I know there are a lot of people like me out there who are not particularly happy in the direction that things are going right now. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you guys all signing in? Okay, you're, I'm sure you're, you're going to come back up at some point, so remember to sign in.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Keith Talia. I've not heard any discussion this morning about advantages to the purveyors of water or sewer. Let's take, for an example, a calaver cement plant. Digress a few years when it was still running. It would have been acuted, included in any community plan, but CCWD would have loved to serve it, but they didn't have the money to put in the pump plant that'd be required to the lines and so forth. But let's assume that a developer came in and bought part of Bear Mountain and wanted to develop it, but 2.4 would preclude him developing it even though he had the money. And CCWD is sitting there just wishing that it would go through, because it would help them out. The same with CPUD or any other agency. The same with CPUD or any other agency. I wanted to point that out, advantages.
Let's put some life into this thing. My name is Peter Race. I'm from General Lynn. I noticed a couple of things that was not really discussed a point. Some of the comments were made. That's great. Just promise the people to put it on the ballot, see what happens.
Put it away.
Put this general plan on the ballot. Simple. Let's make everybody happy. Put it up for a vote, see what happens, okay? I'm sure redefining a family is going to be one of the favorite things that they can express it, I'm sure. Another thing I noticed, when you're talking about infrastructure services, I think you might want to consider it as a two different infrastructure services provided, water and sewer. Water, okay? There's different laws covering those two different items and consequences of those services. Another thing is, the state will not mess with Prop 218 and the state will not mess with Prop 30. That's after, it's done. No more splitting, no more reinterpretation of Prop 218. Whatever good intentions are for land use, there's a little god up in the sky that tells you, you're not going to change supply and demand, but demand and supply. If it's, it took me two years to find my little property. I made compromises. I got the river run through it. I got water rights, I fully realize, no more so than now. I'm half a distance to Stockton, 30 miles, just as much as Jackson. Just a little simple thing. Taxes went up in Stockton, nice smooth road. I'm going to go up to Jackson when I make a big large purchase. Supply and demand will prevail. Supply and demand, hey, people like me who moved out of Livermore, out of Discovery Bay, I moved up here. I love my neighbors. I like the way to them. Do I going to use 10 acres? My sister's 10 acre next to me? No, because I don't want that five and 10-foot thing that I had in Discovery Bay, as much as I love. I had a hotel, but it was more important to me that I can use my land without offending any of my neighbors. If I like the restaurant, I can go downtown or I can go down the street. If there's a demand there, business will come. If you have developers come in, some of the restrictions you made was required, they have to hook up with CCWD? Well, CCWD, maybe not really practicing it too much, but Prop 218 requires past, present, and future special districts have certain, certain amount of control, you know, by the population, by the constituents. They have to comply with it. And when you folks says, well, they're going to have to do this or not do this and so on, you have to go back to the constituents. That's a special district. And I don't know how much of your power of legislation or guidance you might want to ask them to do or not to do. On the Prop 218, the constituents will have something to say about it. And right now, there's water districts and everything all over the place. Nobody totally speaks on their behalf. I realize CCWD gets property tax from everybody and they have certain policies and it's totally contradict what the Board of Supervisors policies. So that's being examined by a couple of other agencies also. But the bottom line is, take a look at the nearby county. When they finally got the final map that they can see and how it's affect their property, it was a total recall. The general plan manager got fired and they redoing it. And there's some litigation going now throughout the county right now. When people get the total individual package to their particular property, that's when a minority is offended. Right now, unless you folks see something new, we have a crummy map that most of the people cannot comprehend and even elected officials have a hard time to compare.
Mr. Race?
What you proposing?
You've got a minute.
Yes, ma'am. What you proposing and what it has been. And when people get the actual down-to-earth, the details, that's when they're going to react. So don't cage yourself. Yes, what you try to do is a sneaky way to limit property rights because somebody decide, hey, I'm blessed, I know what's good for you. People should be able to practice what they want on their property. That's what they paid for. And when the more restriction you put on there, there are going to be less demand.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
I think probably all that is necessary to say has been said by the public on this one issue. But what comes out of it is, from my point of view, is it seems like we could take cuts from the videos that we have of all the other meetings we've had so far. And you could discuss something for an hour and a half and then we could have the public discussion and we could just take clips out of those and put them up on the screen and we see what the back and forth is continuously over the plan. What, to me, it demonstrates is that there is not one group of people that lives in Calaveras County that demands or is entitled to or wants a pattern of development. There are many views on how rural communities should be developed and there's many views on, or there's many reasons why people come to live in rural communities. And so I guess the point that I'm trying to make is that we have now been here since nine, it's 10:40, and we have discussed one, maybe two policies on the, on number two of the land use goal. At that rate, we will not, the land use element will not be finished today, nor the next meeting. And I've heard many, many complaints that this plan has taken way too long and cost way too much money and we still cannot agree on every minor point. I say perhaps we should go ahead and, as Mr. Tuno wanted to put a limit on public comment because that was taking too long, I think we should put limits on the amount of time that we can discuss each individual item. And maybe you have to come to a vote on it, maybe you have to, somebody has to bow out and concede to somebody else on a certain point so we can move ahead because we still have the whole environmental review coming after this is finished. So it's not over once you finish rewriting the, the general plan. So I, my point is, could we have a system to move ahead with this so that we don't have to labor over every item to this extent? And what we're doing is we're really turning people away from the public process because most people don't have the patience for it. And I have a million responses. Lisa says, you know, you buy property, you have the right to do anything you want. If the, if the Butte Fire hasn't proven to us that we're not the only ones that make decisions about our property and how it ends up. And when we look at those people who chose these beautiful places in the middle of a forest, very remotely located, and where they are now, it has nothing to do with economic development, it has nothing to do with private property rights. It has to do with what nature has given us in this particular situation in, in Calaveras County. So there's many factors. We're not going to resolve every single point definitively and everybody's going to agree. So I would like to encourage you to move ahead, make your decisions and let's go on. We'll continue to lobby for what we see as a vision for our county. And clearly, right now, my vision, which was the beginning vision when we started this process 10 years ago, is in a minority. But I really feel that it's time that we move on and that we get through this and then we go on with the next step. And thank you for your time.
Marty Crane. I just wanted to say that I was at all but one of the community meetings for the planning in Valley Springs and many of the general plan meetings with Midter Harnish. Never once did I feel like I was being forced to go one direction or another. My voice was always heard, although I was generally playing the role of the cheerleader. We're all neighbors, we're friends because everyone had different ideas. And just because one person's idea is not accepted by everyone else doesn't mean that it wasn't considered. It just wasn't the general consensus. And so ultimately, we ended up with a product. And I'm, I, every time I, this, we get into this, I notice that all the faces seem to change. And every time someone new comes to the process, they want to start all over because they weren't in the room when this was discussed before. So they want to start all over, which, which disregards the work that was done prior to them. And it's my understanding that the role that we're supposed to be, what we're supposed to be doing here is folding in all the comments from the community and that in the past and, and what's been submitted, not rewriting the whole thing to suit one or two particular views. And yes, you may be hearing from your constituents, but they have the, the ability to put in, you know, write in their comments. That's why we have the process. The process is so important because without it, we end up leaving everyone who came before the people that are sitting here out in the dirt. And I just wanted to say that, that I appreciated the fact that we had someone, I didn't know anything about Midter Harnish at all. I just heard that people were getting together and going to start planning and former supervisor Terry Bailey told me, he says, Marty, you know, if every single lot that was already approved in Rancho was built out, you would never recognize Rancho. So when I hear people say, we want to live here because it's rural, because we can, we don't have, it's not the urban setting, it's, it's not the big cities, it's rural. Well, I hear conflicts in those conversations because if you don't do some type of planning to protect what you're looking for and invite, say, clean business, I mean, do you want people to come in that are just here to make the quick buck? You know, I mean, that's the supply and demand, you know, I mean, they're, they're, they're in the business to do this or to do that. Maybe it's not healthy for us. We have clean air so far, you know, except for what blows in from the valley. But I just feel like we have to keep our eye on the public health and safety, which is the goal of the government and, or the first rules of the government or responsibilities. And so I don't think we were here to rewrite it. We have to build on what we've already done instead of constantly starting over and over and over. As Holly would say, we're getting nowhere, you know? You limit what we have to say up here, but we don't limit the constant startovers. So it's all filmed.
Elections have passed.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Back for discussion.
Can we take a quick?
Sure. Yeah. So we're going to take about a five-minute break, come back at eight minutes till from our recess and we're back? Haven't finished my candy yet. So thank you very much for your public comments and, you know, Holly, I do understand, you know, it's sensitive, the fact this is taking a long time. I would, I would say that, you know, if we were arguing or discussing over, you know, choice of words or something, but this is kind of a minor policy. I mean, a major policy, not a minor policy, but a major sort of direction. So I think that's what we've been struggling with. So in the spirit of that, I mean, I would, I'd like to propose something. What if we said instead, for 2.4, if we said, "Infrastructure such as water and sewer and high-capacity roads shall be encouraged within existing developed areas contiguous to existing communities and areas where future development is anticipated by the general plan as reflected in the general plan use map to serve existing non-contiguous communities and are essential to public health and safety."
You read my notes.
I didn't.
I'm good with that.
Please reread, reread that.
Let me take the candy out, might help. Infrastructure such as water and sewer and high-capacity roads shall be encouraged within existing developed areas contiguous to existing communities in areas where future development is anticipated by the general plan as reflected in the general plan land use, I would put map.
Can you stop for a second? The first part of your proposed language, "Infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera, shall be encouraged within existing developed areas," I think that was your language?
Yes.
It's already there, so it doesn't need to be encouraged in those areas because it's already there.
What? What?
I believe your language reads, "Infrastructure such as water, sewer, et cetera, shall be encouraged within existing developed areas."
Right.
Okay, it's already there.
But it's not already there to the extent that it serves everyone, I'm sure.
It says, "Shall not be extended." It doesn't say encouraged. If you crossed out "shall not be extended" and added the word "encouraged."
Yeah, but my point is, you're encouraging it to be where it already is.
But it's not necessarily already all encompassed within the existing areas, is it?
But that does go along with our guiding principles that we're encouraging it, we're not saying it has to be 100%.
Oh, I, I like that aspect of it. I just, I thought the first, the first, first part of your, your note there was kind of a non sequitur because it's, you don't need to encourage something to be where it already is.
Well, it may...
I think the point is that we have some communities that maybe don't have public sewer and, you know, or maybe it's the capacity is minimized.
A developed area isn't necessarily fully developed in that sense.
Right. It may not have services to the whole community.
Okay, then the rest of your, your language goes how?
Okay. "Infrastructure such as water and service, water and sewer and high-capacity roads shall be encouraged within existing developed areas contiguous to existing communities in areas where future development is anticipated by the general plan as reflected in the general plan map, land use map to serve existing non-contiguous communities and are essential, you could say, and in areas that are essential to public health and safety."
I'm good with, or are essential to public health and safety.
Okay.
I think that we're on the exact same page there.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Hypothetically, if we adopt that language, do we need this new one that was added, 2.5?
I think yes.
I think so, too.
I think that's fairly critical to saying that we're going to, when we review a project that requires public service, they're going to either have it or they're going to provide it. It's not going to be on the backs of...
Okay, now I understand 2.5 better.
Any other discussion? Are we...
I'm looking at eyeballs there and he's in big thoughts.
Wheels are turning. Well, I'm assuming this doesn't carry with it.
Well, I'm assuming this doesn't carry with it an implicit discouragement.
We're encouraging.
Of extension of these services to places that don't fit this. And under that assumption, I think this is okay.
All right. So, are we good?
Just give me the last half of your language again, please.
Well, it's really just the existing language. All right. So, "In areas where future development is anticipated by the general plan as reflected in the general plan land use map, comma, to serve existing non-contiguous communities and/or are essential to public health and safety."
Why are you changing the word from designation to map? What's the, what is your position on that?
I don't know, it's just clearer to me. I don't know, is there a reason that we should use designation?
Actually, I think map is a good change, because land use designation sort of implies a single site, where the map is the whole of the...
Multiple areas.
So, those, all of those areas where we've identified it as appropriate for future development.
Okay. So, are any other discussion? Are we good?
The only, the only point, let's clarify, when we say "non-contiguous communities," the "non-contiguous" component need not be a community in my, in my view. It could be a project.
Not sure I understand what you said.
I don't either.
Well, you're saying, you're, the existing language, which you've adopted, right, of yours, "As reflected in the general plan land use designations," you're going to say, "as reflected in the map, to serve existing non-contiguous communities."
What's a non-contiguous project?
The projects, the hypothetical projects that we've...
No, what's an existing non-contiguous project? Serves existing non-contiguous communities. So, what's a non-contiguous project?
One that's not connected to the...
No, I know, but I'm just asking, what would that, do we have one?
Well, in fact...
I mean, is there one that, that we need to serve that's existing?
No. Existing is the, is the problem word in that sense.
Well, and I think existing is sort of the key word in that sentence.
Maybe we're talking about two different things. What, in your opinion, is a, an existing non-contiguous community?
Well, there's a number of them, I think, that, that are, maybe this one that this woman mentioned up in Murphy's. That would be an existing non-contiguous community that doesn't have sewer and water.
Right. Okay, so there's a non-contiguous community. But that doesn't speak to the issues that we were bringing up earlier, that we've been many times, which would be a non-contiguous project. It's not necessarily a community, it's just, it's some new project, some new proposed project that we agree we want. That we may agree in the future is a good idea, we want this project, we like this project. It's non-contiguous. It's not a community, it's, it's something else.
So, if you're saying to serve non-contiguous kind of, if you're getting rid of existing and you put in non-contiguous community...
No, not getting rid of existing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you're right, there are non-contiguous communities that we want to reach out and, and provide better services to.
Services for.
That's a separate...
So, if you look at 2.5, I think it covers it, because Peter used the word "project" there when he added 2.5. So, I think that's taken into consideration.
Right. Well...
One is, we're going to encourage the extension and provision of services to our communities where it's necessary for public health, you know, all the things there. The other one is, if you're proposing a project, you're going to have to, you're required to provide those services. So, there's two different components of the same thing.
I think 2.5 covers what you're trying to get at, David.
Well, I tell you what.
This is, that 2.4 is going to apply to existing, 2.5 is going to apply to future projects.
2.4 also addresses where future development is anticipated by the general plan.
Yeah, 2.4 is not limited to existing.
Yeah. I, I think it gets to Kelly's question, concern that is the inverse of this implied, I don't believe it is, unless we had, unless we had a corollary statement that said that, you know, "And we will discourage."
Which we had...
But we don't, but we don't really say that.
What that really said in the first place, since now that's...
And that's been changed.
That's right. So, we're flipping it around to saying, we're not saying it's only going to be limiting or we're discouraging it in certain areas, we're saying we're encouraging it in these areas.
Would it make you happy if on the end to serve existing non-contin, that word, "communities or projects essential to public health and safety"?
No, because the project must be then essential to public health and safety.
Every project's going to be essential to public health and safety, period.
No, there are issues with public health and safety, which are legitimate issues. A road needs to be improved because, you know, fire can't get out of there.
What is it you'd like to do here, David? I'm just not sure. How, how do you want to change this?
Okay. If you were to, after, to serve existing non-contiguous communities or future projects or are essential to public safety and health, it's just another, it's just another possibility you're serving. You want to reach out and, and provide better service to existing communities, you want to reach out and provide service to a project that, that is desirable, or you need to do it because of public health and safety.
Well, and I do, I agree. I think the future project's covered under 2.5. You're already going to be...
Well, if it's, if it's, if it's appropriate for 2.5, why is it not appropriate for 2.4?
Because I think part of what goes on when you add a future project in here is that why even have it at all, then? Because you're saying it's, it's, you're not, you're not encouraging growth to where infrastructure already exists, you're encouraging it to where it exists in everywhere else.
Well...
To me, that's what, I mean, it's what you, you've just opened up the...
Are you, are you, do you want to limit 2.4 to what's in place now and then have something else that addresses what is not in place now? Do you want to separate, do you want to separate the issue based upon that? What exists or what, what may be improved?
I'm just trying to, I was trying to find a compromise for a way, to find, just to find a way that, that we could acknowledge all of the work that's gone on before, even, and I think the comment was, "The board has not given new direction that says, 'Thou shall not direct,' you know, that, that we don't care about sewer and water." And, I mean, as far as I know, that policy still exists. So, I think that this 2.4 holds true to the board direction, as we have not seen a change that says they're trying to limit sewer, septic systems, as well as additional wells and directing growth.
So, just for clarity purposes, Peter, if I'm reading this and I'm trying to pick up what David's saying, future development projects would have to do developments to serve existing or non-contiguous communities? That means that if a future project wanted to come in, they now have to...
No.
Okay.
No. This is, this as proposed by FON would basically say that we are going to encourage the extension of public services and roads to that list of items, which includes existing communities, contiguous areas, other areas that are shown on the general plan for future development, non-contiguous communities that are existing, so Sheep Ranch, for example, and where it's necessary for public health. Those are the areas that we want to encourage development. 2.5 says, "We'll allow it elsewhere, but you're going to make sure you are providing it." And to me, that's sort of the bottom line, is the way I would interpret those two policies. It doesn't say we can't allow it or, or that we're even discouraging it. But if there is a, a choice of, CCWD comes in with their capital improvement plan and they say, "Here's, here's where we think we're going to extend services over the next five, now five-year CIP." And we say, "Great, these are, this meets this, you know, it's, they've hit these four topics. It's consistent with our, the goals. We're encouraging the, the extension of those services in those areas." And someone comes in with, with a project that says, you know, "We're, we're outside of that, and we're proposing a general plan amendment, but we've got CCWD to agree to provide water and sewer to us, we're going to pay for the new roads." That's also consistent with that policy, 2.5.
Even within, I understand, even within a, the boundary of 2.4, the provision of the infrastructure items that are listed here, don't they also have to be paid for by the non-contiguous community of interest in some way? If you're extending these facilities to an area that doesn't have them now, aren't, don't you treat it as if it's a project, like any other project? You know, they have to pay the freight? The, the, the portion of the community, the, the development, the residential neighborhood, whatever it is, don't they have to pay for that extension?
Typically, yes. I think that there could be a situation where, let's say for a high-capacity roads, we, as a part of our regional transportation plan and annual capital improvement plan, we say, "We really need to improve this road."
And we're going to do it on...
And we're going to do it based on general fund or whatever other kind of special funding mechanism is in place.
Sure.
That's not necessarily going to be paid directly by those people benefiting it, but because it's, it's a hazard or there's public health safety need, we need to do this and we're willing to pay for it, because it serves one of these other goals.
Okay, I understand that situation. Does 2.4, well, does 2.4, do you need to make a distinction within the policy section here of those projects that we're, we're doing because they need to be done for public health and safety versus for some other reason? You're, you're supplying water or you're, you're supplying sewer, doesn't necessarily have anything to do with public health and safety? If we're encouraging the expansion of, of the infrastructure system...
I don't think you need to have additional language to differentiate between that and the policies. I think when we come forward with project review, whether it's a county project, a CIP from a different district, or development proposal, we'll look at that and say, "Well, what's the purpose of this?"
Okay, so, the neighborhood that the woman who isn't here anymore was talking about, the one up by, what was it, Murphy's?
Murphy's Pines.
Murphy's Pines?
What's it called again?
Murphy's Pines, I think.
Okay. So, if they say, "Look, our, we have inadequate water here, we've got to have an extension." That's not coming to us anyway, right? That's, that's going to go, they're going to go to CCWD and say, "We really need your water service."
But before CCWD says, "We're going to, as a part of our capital improvement plan, provide water to this area that's outside of our district or, you know, or within the district but not part of our, our plan..."
With an assessment, perhaps.
"The actual approval of their capital improvement plan is required to be reviewed by the county for consistency with the general plan." And we would say, "That's appropriate. That is serving a need because it's existing non-contiguous community..."
Because we're encouraging that.
"...and it's protecting the public health and safety. Therefore, yes, it's consistent with the general plan." And we look at all of their proposals and we say, "Okay, yeah, makes sense, good, you're good to go."
I think you've solved the problems here. The existing one had unintended consequences, such as encouraging reliance on individual wells, individual wells and septic, because it discouraged or limited extending public water and services, exactly the opposite of what the board of supervisors was concerned about. The existing one would have had the unintended consequence of prohibiting extension of water to the cement plant back then. It would have prohibited extending water for ag purposes. I think it's changed, it does none of those things. It doesn't take a position on the one way or the other. And so, I think it's acceptable.
Can I make a recommendation that we accept 2.4 and 2.5 as amended?
Sure.
2.5 hasn't been amended, has it?
No. Well, we were changing...
2.5 is good.
Well, excuse me, yes.
Yeah.
2.4 as amended and 2.5 as written.
I'll second that.
I guess we made him, are all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye, too.
Moving on.
Just one clarification, with the last phrase, was it changed to "and" rather than "or," or was it...
And/or.
And/or.
Well, that went smoothly. Moving on, community character and design. Discussion?
I'm good.
I'm looking at my note on 3.2. If I can read my own note here, just one moment, please. I had a question on 3.2, not so much a, it's not a suggested edit, just a question. How does the county preserve and enhance these, these historic structures?
Well, I can give some examples, I'm sure FON can too, because we have historical communities in our districts. A lot of times, it can be just even through a grant process where they're restoring the buildings.
There's also historic building codes, there's things the county can do, like pass the Mills Act, that give property tax relief to people that are restoring. There's, there's a lot of things that the county can do.
There's a lot of things that can do that, and I'm...
Okay. Does this prevent, if a person has a building that's, has some historic significance or it's an old building, but it really needs to be torn down, because it's just, you know, it's too much to restore it, or does it, does it prevent the property owner from, from tearing it down and putting up something else in its place of, that, that fits with the guidelines of the community?
I don't believe so, not unless there, the community has adopted design review guidelines that, like McCollum &amp; Hill has, and it requires that the, if you do want to demolish an existing historic structure, that they be given, I don't know, 30 days, 60 days, time to find, you know, another, another buyer. I can't remember all of the particulars, but also that they could record the assets.
And where's that, where's that code?
McCollum &amp; Hill has historic design guidelines.
Okay.
And that's included in there.
So, so the implementation of this policy is covered under two implementation programs, 3A and 3E, and it talks about some of the different programs the county could adopt to encourage, or depending on how it was adopted, could actually restrict someone's ability to utilize historic. And that's going to be a follow-up action by the county, ultimately adopted by the board of supervisors, to say, "Here are rules, here are standards regarding historic structures of historic communities." And it's really up to, you're getting in that next level of detail, what kind of provisions the county wants to have. Are they going to be purely voluntary? Are there going to be some mandatory provisions? Are there at least some way where you can document and record the, the structure before it's, it's removed, so that at least there's historical reference to, here is what was here before and, and, you know, there's, it's really up to what the county chooses to adopt later on, as to how that policy is implemented. But I think that there's been certainly plenty of public input as to the uniqueness of the historic characters of our communities and the desire to retain those, you know, to the degree practical.
Okay, so, are you saying in effect that the, the, what exists in McCollum &amp; Hill right now might, is, is going to be possibly adopted countywide?
It could be. You know, and, no. So, the way this, these are written up is that individual communities would essentially petition the board to say, "We want design guidelines for our community." And then through the development of those guidelines, the, the standards would be adopted and procedures would be adopted that would say, "How do we address, how do we protect our historic resource at the same time, allowing for the use of private property and the owner's ability to utilize that land and, and those facilities over there?"
Okay. I, I did have a comment about three point one, but I'll step back and let anybody else comment about anything else they want first.
On three point three, it says, ensure new non-residential development is designed in a manner that is compatible, et cetera. Why is that limited to non-residential? Because we heard from Bob Guaramandi the other day that what happens next to resource production lands can affect what you can do with your resource production lands. And if it's, if this policy is appropriate for non-residential development, why isn't it appropriate for residential development?
I think it's really talking to the design, what the building looks like, Kelly. I think you're talking more about the, the compatible land uses. This really has to do with what it aesthetically looks like.
Well, it also speaks of buffering.
Yes.
Noise, lighting and traffic-
Yes.
All of which you get with subdivisions.
Well, this is commercial development though, non-residential.
Well, my point is, why, why is it so limited?
And not including residential development?
Why is the word non-residential in there?
Well, I don't know.
It doesn't have to be?
Could be just new development.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. I'm good with that.
I'm backing up a little bit to three point one here. New development shall be designed to be compatible with the natural scenic and historic resources of the county. It's all new development. So I'm looking for an example of how you make something compatible with all of those elements.
That would be in the, again, in the implementation measure that if we, if a community adopts design standards, that's a consideration that you have as you, you know, where we have discretionary development and that we take a look at that, well, how does that fit in with the community? How does it fit in with the scenic character, the natural setting? Those can be incorporated through design standards or if it's, say, a, a planned development where, you know, the design of it itself comes before this body for review. That's part of the consideration.
Okay, so then should three point one include a qualifier to the effect that where a design standard has been implemented, has been approved?
I, I don't think it's necessary and I think it, it tends to make it too-
This says, this, this implies county-wide, whereas you're saying, the example that you gave is, is with respect to community plans and, you know, design standards.
So where that is implemented is through either adopting standards that would then apply to ministerial development. Says, here are standards, I think it's something that Fawn talked about earlier today, that, you know, developers wanna know, what are my standards? What do I have to build by? Tell me what it is, I can design that. Or where we choose not to design standards, but instead say, this is sensitive enough for this use that we want to review it on a case-by-case basis that comes before the planning commission through a plan development application or design review application, then that's a consideration that is looked at when the project is reviewed. How does this fit in with the environment? How does this fit in with the community?
Okay, so two different, two different situations. One, a, a project is proposed within an existing community that has a design standard. Right? And it's been put, and they, those, that's been delineated somehow in their community plan.
Right.
All right? Project number two falls outside of one of these areas. Okay? And this three point one says, we wanna take a look at it anyway.
No, there actually would be, there'd be two. We could say, we, we have areas that are zoned PD and that requires a discretionary review. We look at the design, it's planned development. Otherwise, it is permitted by right. The community decide, you know, there's sufficient, you know, standards in place for, you know, people can design any way they want to as long as they meet the minimum setback, height requirements, whatever else our zoning code provides. And so there is no special design criteria. So where a community wants to have design criteria, go through a process to adopt those and that becomes the standard by which they build. If a community decides, no, we, we don't care, really. It doesn't really matter to us that, you know, as far as how the buildings look, as long as they meet the minimum standards of zoning, then there is no design criteria. Or if there's a proposed use or proposed site that has been zoned for PD, then that does trigger that kind of review. So there's sort of three different scenarios. It's allowed by right, there are no design criteria. There are design standards that are in place, you meet design standards, you're good to go. Or you have to come before the planning commission for review.
What's been bothering me about that, that three point one though is the fact that it says Calaveras County and not the existing community. What's, what's, what's appropriate for McCollum Hill may not be appropriate for Rancho.
Right. And, and that's why the implementation program refers to specific communities adopting programs.
Three point one, the way it's worded.
Peter, I think if, if, if you look at LU three A and three B, you've got footnotes referencing which policy it references. If we could put that footnote referencing LU three point one to go to LU three A, kind of the same as you did here. It implements policies, that way that it would reference back. I think it would be clearer for everybody.
LU three one is under LU three A.
But I'm saying, under policies, if the footnote was here-
Do it both ways.
Go it both ways because his questions-
That speaks to the qualifier that I was mentioning.
His questions would have been answered if there was a footnote referencing back versus both ways. Just edit, copy, paste, boom.
Okay, we do that.
It's just a suggestion, it might make it a little easier and clear for everybody to understand.
So when this comes back, you will see not only the notes under the community plan, under the, the implementation programs, but also which programs apply that policy.
To each policy.
Yeah.
It just gives further explanation to it. And I think it would address your issue with the Calaveras County because if you had gone over here and referenced it, it would have made sense.
Right.
Okay.
My next note is three point four. And with respect to the, the term clustering, I went back and, and looked at how that term was meant to be used in, in past land use planning, general plan and, well, how it, how it, how it came to be. And the term was, was used to apply to a particular piece of land. Let's say it's a, a twenty-acre piece of land that was zoned for twenty parcels, I'm making this up. And, but the topography of the land was such that you couldn't put the twenty parcels on it because there was a steep hillside or there was a gully or something, that you couldn't do that. And it, what it, what the concept did was provide that, that property owner the ability to have his twenty parcels, but instead of one acre, they would be smaller.
Right.
And they would be pushed onto the, the portion of the land that was, that you could build on. And the, so he, he got his twenty parcels and the benefit, if you will, to the rest of the community is that it created an open space. Maybe his twenty parcels were on half of his twenty acres and the rest of it was open space. Nothing's ever gonna touch it because it's just, it is what it is. You can't build on it and there's a value to just leaving it open. That's how the term clustering was originally came to be. The way that, the term clustering is, has been now interpreted, it's kind of morphed into something else where it, it says, where, it, it, it refers to a, a density factor. Encourage clustering of residential community, of development where appropriate, meaning encourage higher densities in, in certain areas. You would agree that that's-
No, I think that this policy gets to your first point.
I do too.
Was that, that this is a traditional interpretation of what clustering means.
It doesn't say anything about density here.
Because, because it, but then why would it, based upon availability of infrastructure and community character?
Well, let's say if, you know, because we allow well and septic on five-acre parcels. So if you had a hundred acres for, zoned for five, you could get twenty, twenty lots. Instead, you wanna put those twenty lots on twenty half-acre parcels. Well, that's gonna require public water and sewer because you can't get well and septic on a half-acre parcel. So that's why, you know, if you can provide the service to that cluster of development, then it could work.
Okay, but this says to encourage the clustering for purposes of, of infrastructure, which in your case is sewer.
Based on availability of infrastructure.
And water.
And-
It could be a lot of things.
And roads.
Okay. Your example was a person has a hundred acres zoned for five acres. It's twenty, twenty-
Twenty lots.
Twenty lots. Okay. And, and are you talking about a change in, in design based upon the, the landowner's desires or based upon other factors such as-
So, so without going through a general plan amendment, they could create smaller parcels by clustering those twenty lots into a smaller portion of the property. You had the same constraints, steep-
So that he can provide-
But, but in order to do so, he needs to then serve it with maybe public water or depending how small it goes, water and sewer. So the five-acre parcels would allow well and septic. You go smaller than that and are under our standards, you, you have to have at least water or sewer. And depending how small you go, you might have to have both. So you can't cluster and still retain the same development standards as you would for a five-acre parcel. That's what we're trying to say there.
Provides a lot of flexibility here.
Okay, so if he can get CCWD to agree to extend a, a water and sewer line, water and sewer lines out to his property, which is maybe some distance from its, its, its lines, the county's encouraging this kind of development where he's got a, a little small neighborhood, let's say, in effect, that's now served by sewer and water where it wouldn't otherwise be. Where it otherwise would be five-acre parcels. He, he's, he's wanting to create a small development that's served by sewer and water that would otherwise be served by septic and wells.
Right.
And we wanna encourage that kind of development.
That's basically the result of the amended policy two point four and this policy. It would say, yes, we would encourage that.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm good on that whole section.
Okay, I, the only, I did have, it's probably, don't really need it, but on three point five, create alternatives to onsite parking in historic districts. You know, one of the reasons to do that is to really support economic development for, so I would just say, to support economic development opportunities and to protect the historic character of the communities. Because there's another reason to do that.
What's your edit again?
Just add, create alternatives to onsite parking in historic districts to support economic development opportunities and to protect the historic character.
I'm fine with that.
I am too.
Could I ask for an example of how the, the county would, would create an alternative parking?
Murphy's House one, where you, and, you know, people complain about this because it's expensive, but instead of creating parking on each individual parcel where you've got, you know, historic buildings up close to each other.
Yeah.
Someone wants to build something new there, retain the historic character, rather than have a parking lot in front, you maintain that same sort of front facade of the sidewalk, the building up close, and you have off-site parking.
Off-site.
So the county could then create off-site parking. There may be other opportunities, that's sort of the traditional one.
The county then has to acquire some parcel and make a parking lot to allow for the-
Right, and then, and then the develop-
And in lieu fees.
And pay in lieu fees to cover the cost of that over time.
Okay, they buy into it.
Right. Yeah. So if your building requires five parking spaces and the cost of the parking lot was X number of dollars, you know, you will run out by five and that's your in-lug fee.
I'm fine with that. With Fawn's addition to the language. On three point seven, unless somebody else has something ahead of that?
Well, on three point six, it says, ensure that the design of community-oriented, community-oriented facilities are compatible with community character. Do we mean community-oriented public facilities or something else?
I don't know, I took it to say public, but maybe that's-
Maybe we should make it say public.
Yeah.
I, I think that's actually a good idea.
Yeah. Because that's how I read it, but I think you're right.
And if it's, it should be, ensure the design of community-oriented public facilities. I think it is compatible.
Yes.
Design is, yes. Okay, three point seven?
On three point seven, is there any more you guys want to add?
Yes, we'll be coming back to the public. Yes.
New non-residential development shall be designed to integrate with and enhance the community and surrounding uses by utilizing compatible architecture and site design and provide pedestrian and vehicle interconnectedness. Would that, if there is no discernible dominant architectural design, you couldn't make it compatible with, with it, right? So wouldn't it be appropriate to say, where a, where an architectural, where a dominant architectural design exists, then you make future non-residential development compatible with it?
I would have read it the other way. If there is no discernible compatible architecture, then everything would be compatible.
Right.
It's, it's the same statement in reverse.
You know, it's, it's sort of another way to restate what we talked about in, in, I think, three point three where, where we, where there is a, a community desire to maintain some type of unique character, whether it's the, you know, Alpine architecture of Arnold or the historic character of McCollum Hill. And there is sort of a distinct style, and I'm not sure you could actually say that for Arnold, but, you know, to a degree, I think that's true. And if the, you know, the populace of, of Arnold, working with the, the county, came up with an architectural style, there may be, you know, three or four different architectural styles that sort of fit a community, then that could be something that could be adopted through design standards. If the community said, hey, you know, anything goes here. You know, we, we don't really have a, a consistent pattern. We don't really have a desire to have us look like something, then most likely, they're not gonna be interested in, in adopting design guidelines for that community.
Okay, that, that goes to what Lisa was talking about in terms of, and I also on three point two, as the qualifier. Do we need to embed the qualifier in three point seven so that we understand there are places where that's gonna be in effect and there are places where it's not going to be?
I think that by referencing the implementation measure underneath each of these policies-
So he's going to be doing that for all of them?
That, that will sort of help point to how this will be implemented and I don't know that the qualifier is necessary.
So you took Lisa's comment to mean-
Every, all of them.
Do it consistently.
And henceforth, every-
Go, go.
Yes.
Element will have double cross-reference.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Sorry.
That's okay, I think that's probably consistent with a lot of community people.
So I had a question on three point seven. So going back to Commissioner Wooster's comment on three point three, where non-residential, if we're doing a new development, shouldn't be we be concerned with providing the pervas- to pedestrian and vehicle interconnectedness in that development?
Well, I, I think that, again, this is the policy. How we apply that policy is gonna vary depending on what the situation is.
Right.
We are always going to be looking at pedestrian interconnectedness.
Okay, but it says non-residential, should that not, should that say that?
Should, you're saying, should it just say new development?
Should it just say new development versus non-residential? I mean, it, it kind of goes with 3.3 above where we did that. I don't know why we would specifically exclude non-residential developments.
Yeah, and maybe combining the pedestrian vehicle interconnectedness, look at two different issues here.
Okay.
One is your architecture, and I don't think that we want to start adopting design standards for single family homes. Uh, I don't think that's anything that the.
I got it.
County would desire. The issue of providing pedestrian vehicle interconnectedness is really sort of a separate issue.
I get it, I, I just looked at the title.
And maybe it should just be a separate policy.
My next comment is 3.9, unless somebody else has a. Okay.
Did we resolve 3.7?
Well, I saw some nodding of heads with separating, uh, and maybe you should say new development shall provide pedestrian vehicle interconnectedness.
Right.
Okay.
I think we're good with 3.7.
All right, so, but that would be a.
That would be a separate policy.
That would be like a 3.8. Whatever.
We'll, we'll renumber it when we're all done.
Right, okay.
I'm okay with 3.8. On 3.9, what is an example of light trespass?
The glare that you get from a lamp that shines out onto the road, onto neighbor's property.
Basically shining on someone else's property.
Yeah, and this one, um, I believe there's a, on the implementation, is there a light ordinance that's referred to?
Well, we haven't created one yet, but it's.
Well, one that.
One that we would be creating.
It's been on the.
Talking about creating?
Yeah.
Been on the wish list for a while.
Yes.
I, I have an issue with the, with the lighting, with the light ordinance. I, um, we don't have one now, do we have a light problem now?
Yes.
What, where are the light problems that have directed us to needing, needing an ordinance?
Well, there has been a number of comments from the public, and I know it's also been something on the list of things that my predecessors had on, things that they wanted to have done. I assume that came from either the board or the planning commission that a light ordinance was something that was desired in the, in the county. I think that a lot of people moving to a rural community, you know, they don't want to see a lot of lights. Uh, and if there are necessary lighting for security and safety, then those should be shielded, they shine down onto what needs to be lit and not someone spotlight that, you know, shine, lights up everyone's name, you know, the whole neighborhood and those, you know, shows up in the sky.
People like to see the stars at nighttime and can't do it available.
Okay, would, would the lighting ordinance and a signage ordinance be one, one ordinance?
Probably not. I think that lighting for signs would be a component of the lighting ordinance. Or there could be, or, or we would have specific provisions for sign lighting of how that is, you know, provided in the sign ordinance.
Sign lighting would be a component of lighting ordinance.
Yes, and it could be either in the lighting ordinance or it could be in the sign ordinance.
So, but can we kind of get into like the actual.
Oh, it has signage that doesn't have anything to do with lighting, so it's not.
Right.
Perhaps we could like save the ordinance discussion for when we actually get to an ordinance, since we're, you know, we've still got a lot of work to go through.
If you have a, if you have a, a policy statement here that necessarily means an ordinance is on its way, then that's why I want to discuss the policy statement.
I like 3.9.
Okay, I'm fine with that section now.
Okay, so.
That we just finished.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay, so people, people in the public, would you like to talk about community character and design?
I'm still Peter Race, gentlemen. One thing that.
And ladies.
Pardon me, ma'am?
You said gentlemen, I said and ladies.
And ladies, definitely.
Thank you.
Very lovely, ladies all. Something that hit me, uh, as you were talking about, on a property, water and sewer, maybe you can give the courtesy to developer. Hey, you have to come back and prove that you will have water and sewer because they do have water rights. They buy a line and they say, hey, let's pull a couple of drills in, see what kind of water for you getting. They can provide self-watering, they have the water on their property, they, they do have water rights, very strict water rights. That's one thing. The other thing is, uh, when you put in about CCW, you can contact CCWD, what about all the other agencies that had? Hey, I'm going to get it from Angel's Camp, they have water rights, they're selling it down in San Diego, maybe they can make a deal with, I'm just saying an example, they can approach Angel's Camp, can we work something out?
Excuse me, what does this have to do with community design?
Because you were talking about on the, on the property, you have to show that you're going to get water and sewer connections.
That was on the last.
Well, you, that's when I asked, can a public?
Oh, did we not do public infrastructure? Oh, we didn't, I'm so sorry.
You heard my.
I'm so sorry.
Send me flowers, then talk, I will take care of it.
Actually, we did that before we went to break.
No, 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 just a couple of minutes ago, you were talking about.
Oh, well, no, we're, we're.
The property owner have to show that they.
All right, now you got me out, so we're back on community character and design.
And just ask if, and I said no at the end, okay.
Oh, well, we already did that section, yes. I didn't know, I thought you were going to ask if we were moving on to public comment.
No. People do have very strong water rights, and if a developer comes in, small developer, 50 acres, 100 acres, somebody wants to put five, 10 acres, whatever they want to do, okay? One of the conditions is going to be, I presume, that yes, you're going to have to show that you're going to be able to hook up with CCWD. Well, someone's going to say chronic capitalism, because that developer still has, should have the right to say, hey, being sarcastic, but tell me, county, they have so much water, let me hook up with them. Or I'm going to go to Amador County and a lake that they can hook up with. So if you put in CCWD can provide water for you.
Peter, which, which policy are you referencing? Because I'm not following you at all.
About two.
He's, he's talking about the infrastructure.
Two or three items before you were talking about splitting of properties.
No, we're in here, doesn't mention CCWD or any water facility by name.
Yes, it was mentioned that they can go to CCW and CCWD.
Oh, that was just a, an example of use, it was not being put in writing.
It wasn't putting in writing?
Absolutely not.
That's what I wanted to clear.
Yeah, so we're good, right? All right.
Oh, you're the best, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so may I continue?
Yes.
Then you can dismiss me?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. My point is, if a developer can, want to come in and they take a couple of holes, we got to question, because up to now, nobody knows how much ground, underground water we have. They should have a right to have their own service district, first of all. They don't have to hook up with CCWD. So long as you leave CCWD out of it, and the responsibility of the developer is on him, and he will demonstrate that he can get water and sewer on his property, should be able to.
That goes back to, that goes back to 2.4.
I'm there, but you may.
Are you happy?
Oh, well, let's not go into detail, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, the comments that Mr. Race is making go back to table LU1, and we discussed this, I brought up the, the issue when it, it came to private, private wells. And I mentioned, I don't forget what the answer was, but my question was, could there be a private well that serves more than one home? So in the example that Mr. Maurer, uh, Mr. Maurer gave where the person's got the 100 acres, but they're going to cluster the homes in a cer, you know, in less than, uh, less than five acre parcels, which, which means that they have to hook up to, um, a, a public water, could they instead, I think, if I interpret Mr. Race's comments right, could they instead use the, the water rights that they have on the, on, on this parcel to create a public water system, their own little public water system?
They, they could create what is essentially a small public water system. Um, it's regulated by the state, I mean, I, once you're serving, I think it's more than two homes from a well, that it falls under a whole different set of regulations as far as, you know, water quality, uh.
Yeah, if they could meet those, then they can do it.
They could do it.
And it was, it was even tougher with respect to sewer.
Right.
A lot tougher.
Yes.
Right, but if they can meet them, they can do it.
Mm-hmm.
That was, does that answer your question? Right, so that goes back to the table here.
So who's next? Community character.
On LU3.4, encourage clustering of residential development, I support.
Could you state your name, Muriel, for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Muriel Zeller, Valley Springs.
And sign in if you haven't?
I do, I signed in once.
Thank you, that's, once is good.
I support open space conservation subdivision design or clustering in most instances, and, and I just wanted to clarify that we're talking about the remainder parcel being permanently protected open space with, um, typically a conservation easement. Is that correct?
That would be typically a condition of the, um, the tentative map, that if they're moving the density from one portion of the property to the rest, that lot, that open space lot or whatever it's called, would be identified as that, and that the density has been essentially transferred from there to the rest of the property. So without going through a general plan amendment, zone change to increase the density, that could not be further subdivided.
That would go into the 3.3 with the buffering?
Excuse me?
That would go into three, with the buffering of that, with the open space?
No, really sort of different situation, again, it's sort of, you've got 100 acres, you can only develop half of it, but you're going to transfer all of the density, all 20 units onto that half of the property or whatever portion, the rest of that set aside. It's not, you can't come back and further subdivide that saying, well, gee, I've got 50 acres that's zoned for five acre parcels. There is a restriction that's noticed.
It's done, it's done.
It's done, yeah.
It's like an S on it, or double S.
What mechanism is used to set that aside would be something that would be identified through the tentative map, it could be conservation easement, it could be dedicated to some public entity. Uh, there's a number of different ways that that density transfer could take place, um, or, or that that set aside, it's not really density transfer.
It's not a density transfer in that situation.
Right, right, it's not a density transfer, but, but that, that portion where the, the clustering didn't occur is reserved as some type of open space.
Yeah, but it doesn't need to be labeled, anything, it's just, it's just gone for purposes of future development.
It could just be a remainder parcel that you can't further subdivide.
Well, well, no, it's, it is important that it be identified at the tentative map stage, when the map is recorded, that that, um, that it is reserved as open space, because what has happened is, um, you know, over time, people sort of lost track of, well, how did that occur? And so to, you know, ensure that, that the density is, you know, what, what it was and remains that way, is that there is a notice so that someone who might buy that in the future thinking, oh, I've got 50 acres that's zoned for fives, I can create 10 lots on this. Well, no, those, those 10 lots are gone, they were removed over to a different part of the property.
Once it's labeled as a remainder, that takes care of it then?
Not, not as a remainder, it could be a designated open space, there could be a notice restriction that's recorded on it, just says that, you know, the density was trans, was moved to the rest of the property, something, the remainder is a different tool, that's something different, but.
So somehow the assurance is, is that it would be reserved as open space.
That is, that is how that would work.
Typically, the, um, the tool that is used is a perpetual conservation easement, because if you don't have some type of perpetual protection, then the, um, the potential for that land to be subdivided, the remaining open space parcel, um, you, you don't really have any guarantees.
A, a conservation easement is a tool to do that, it's one of several, and it may be the most common, but, but there are other, other ways to do that. And that would be handled at the tentative map stage to ensure that, you know, everyone recognized what the purpose of that large lot was, it wasn't just something, well, we're only going to develop half the property now, we may come back in later and develop the rest of it. The entirety of the property is developed at that point.
Without protection on the remaining open space parcel, clustering really doesn't make any sense.
Oh, absolutely.
That's true.
I agree with you, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dave Haley, again representing Castle and Cook in Copperopolis. Just wanted to make sure I understand this correctly, uh, we don't mind non-residential compatibility, whether it's historical or within the context of maybe craftsman style or something, but residential is more left to the marketplace. We've established design guidelines within a, uh, specific plan context, and we, we manage those, encourage craftsman style, but sometimes there's applications for other styles, whether it be French country or traditional or, you know, more contemporary, as long as it's not way out there, you know, we do accept that, you know, within the context of design and landscaping and so on. So, so we look at non-residential a little bit different than commercial. As to clustering, uh, we agree with clustering, but there's different types of clustering within a mixed use context, you know, in larger developments, you have sometimes 12 units per acre, sometimes eight, sometimes half acre, one acre, with relevance of open space, and that open space should be a conservation easement. We agree with what that's saying, but in a larger project, there's a, a little bit different context of clustering. It's not all clustered within any area, there's different styles within a single development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Signing in.
Thank you.
Just want to echo what, what Dave, Dave said, that's true, clustering, there's other reasons for clustering besides just the ones talked about in one particular development, just for aesthetic purposes and for the enjoyment of the whole development, just clustering on that development is a term that's often used. Anyway, that's not what I started to say. I just want to talk about three of the policies you've discussed. LU3.3, I completely support Mr., Commissioner Wooster's suggestion to delete the non-residential reference there and make that a general, uh, policy for development. And then 3.4 on clustering, I completely support that. When you go to enclustering, excuse me, encourage clustering where appropriate based on this and that. To increase open space and housing affordability, um, you might consider adding another reason in there. It also reduces the capital costs of development, such as public services, roads, stormwater management, and that's a significant reason for using clustering. So, um, it makes it less expensive to develop a parcel because you have fewer roads, uh, less length of PG need to be taken out there, water and sewer. So that's another reason that developers also like to cluster is because it reduces the capital costs of development, so that's just a, a consideration, you might add that as a reason. And then in 3.9, I support that, uh, policy to retain the rural character of the county's communities, and you might just add in there, end dark skies to make it clear that you're, that's what you're talking about. The rural nature of the county's communities and dark skies, that's why we want to control the light pollution. So that, to me, would make it a little bit clearer. And I also support that, and it's actually very easy to do. I took some out, uh, exterior lights on my home that were installed before I purchased it and, um, just bought some very low-cost shields that just clip on the top of the light and they guide the light down to more where it's needed rather than shining onto my neighbor's property, and it's a very easy thing to do, and especially in, in the matter of designing a development from scratch, it's just a, a kind of a no-brainer, because that's why we all live here and like our dark, dark skies, so thank you.
We've, we've had that in, in, uh, conditional use permits in the past, too.
Yeah, we've been advocating for it for years, trying to get people to do it. In fact, I think we're, we now have a hand. In fact, I think we now have a handout at the planning department, that's a very simple kind of a guideline on what people can do for their, either commercial or residential developments, that just some simple steps to reduce glare onto properties and glare. But it's, it's not, it doesn't go without saying, we've had to advocate for it at every, every opportunity, so if this is in here, it might be a little bit clear for developers to know that it's an easy thing to do, and it's, we would like to have that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Marty Crane, I just, oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add to that, that the light glare isn't just, isn't just for if it's a nuisance to the neighbor or, or affecting our dark skies, it can also be an issue for drivers. When you're driving along, and all of a sudden you come around the corner, it's a dark night, and all of a sudden there's a blasting light in your eyeball from someone's porch, you can't see anything, and I do notice that every once in a while. And there was something else, too, and I can't remember what it was, but it just occurs to me that it's a safety issue on the road sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know what it was. There was a discussion some time ago about, I don't remember where it was, about security lighting and safety, and, and the, the, the information that was given was that just because you have bright lights, and a lot of people think those big lights that light up the entire neighborhood or their entire space are really a good security lamp, they create shadows, so they really do just the opposite. If you're, if what you're looking for is security, they create shadows, which gives people places to hide, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we're bringing back the commission for discussion, there was a couple of ideas.
Let me run through just the changes that we have so far.
Or I was going to just talk, a couple of ideas thrown out about additions to these, two of them, that I wrote down anyway. One was, three point four is adding, you know, it's another reason for clustering is reducing capital development costs.
Do you do what now?
Add, reduce capital development costs as one of the reasons for clustering, a benefit?
So you would say encourage clustering of residential development where appropriate, based upon availability of infrastructure and community character, to increase open space and housing affordability, or to make, or to...
Reduce infrastructure costs?
Reduce development costs?
Yeah. Is that a policy? Well...
It's unnecessary, but it doesn't hurt to say why we're doing it.
It may or may not be a factor at some point on a project.
The, the policy really is, is encourage clustering of residential development, although the base on availability of infrastructure, I think, is important, but the rest of it is just sort of, you know, demonstrating the reason why.
Right.
Okay.
It, it, it doesn't hurt, it, it doesn't change the nature of the policy.
Okay, that's fine. And the other one was on three point nine, retain the rural nature of the county's communities and dark skies by controlling light pollution.
I'm in for that one.
Okay, so those are the...
Retain the rural nature of the county's communities.
And dark skies by controlling light pollution.
Okay.
Do we want to add a public safety in there at all? Because I think the point that was Marty about made, as far as it is an issue, that when there's bright lights that are shining onto the road, which is a concern. Maybe just add within the parentheses, glare light trespass, I'm not sure how to do that. Maybe before that, controlling light pollution and promote public, maybe not, I think it's, it's implied, I think.
I think so.
It's certainly an issue, and that will be addressed in the dark sky ordinance.
Right, in the ordinance itself. Right, and I think that we'll be, when we're actually directing the ordinance, we'll, we'll be addressing that. So did you have others, you were going to summarize?
So the summary, three point three, we're striking non-residential. Three point five, we've added, create alternative to onsite parking in historic districts to support economic development opportunities and to protect historic, the historic character of the neighbor of, of communities. Three point six, substitute public for community oriented, and it is rather than are.
Or design of community oriented public facilities.
Oh, okay.
Public facilities is.
Added there, okay.
Yeah, just add, stick in public and isn't the are.
We've separated the two provisions of three point seven, so that the last phrase, the first policy will end after site design, and then the new policy will read, new development shall provide pedestrian vehicle interconnectedness. Those are all the changes that I had.
And then three point nine, the dark sky.
And three point nine, the dark sky.
Three point seven retains the language non-residential.
Yes.
Yes.
And then I got to the issue that Mr. Haley had, too, as far as creating architectural standards for single-family residences or residential development.
The point that Mr. Haley was making.
Okay.
Consensus?
Yeah, we good with that?
Yes.
Do we, do we need a motion? Or we just, Peter?
You know, probably a good idea.
Okay, let's do it.
Just a recommendation?
No, just, you want a motion?
I'll make the motion.
The last meeting we did, consensus where there wasn't a motion.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We're good with that.
Okay, so we'll just consent to those changes that I read into the record, okay.
Okay.
We'll go to lunch before we start.
Thanks, break, and come back with economics.
We'll be back at one o'clock, we're recessed.